Someone out there in Cyberland, please send me a ping. Please make it G rated this time. I got the ping, so we're live. Thank you. Okay. I'm going to, at 6:31, I call the City of Castle Hills Regular Meeting to order and determine whether a quorum is present. A quorum is present, thank you, council. And for the invocation, I'd like to invite Ms. Diana Wurstrough.
Thank you, Mayor Howe.
Thank you.
Dear Lord, we thank you for this day and for allowing us to assemble together this evening. We ask that you guide each of the city leaders here tonight, both in making their decisions this evening and in their daily decisions to do the best for their community. I ask your blessing for each and every one of us here today, in Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you, Ms. Wurstrough. The Pledge of Allegiance, I believe we have one Boy Scout here this evening. Thomas?
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you, Thomas. We'll start off by welcoming a newly appointed City of Castle Hills Police Officer, Jalen Brady and Garrett Earlywine.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, Council, Staff, Citizens. Thank you all for coming out for the introduction of our two newest officers. Hope you'll stick around for the financial report as well. First, we'd like to introduce Jalen Brady. Both of these officers, by the way, graduated in the same cadet class recently, and they were both very high in that class. We're grateful to have them. First is Jalen Brady. He's from San Antonio primarily, went to Angelo State, where he obtained a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. His fiance, he's accompanied with his fiancee, Sierra, and they are expecting their first child in August. Jalen Brady, if you'll come up, please, sir.
Jalen, welcome to the City of Castle Hills.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Anything I can do for you, let me know.
Thanks, Mayor.
And second, we've got Garrett Earlywine. Garrett spent the last five years in the Army, was recon and military police. He's currently a reservist, comes to us from Nixon, Texas. He was the best driver at the academy in the pursuit training and everything else, so we expect safe things there, and also a top-five cadet in the academy. And again, we're grateful to have Garrett. His girlfriend is currently a junior at Texas A&amp;M? Senior. Senior. And we're grateful to have Garrett as well.
Okay. I would like to invite Monica Rango to the front, please, where we're going to proclaim lupus awareness, Purple Ribbon Day on Friday, May the 18th, to be presented to Angelica Garza, but Ms. Rango will be here this evening, Field Sales Director, South Central Texas Lupus Foundation of America, Lone Star Chapter. And we can get that website to you. There's a lot of good information regarding that. Thank you. Okay, this is a mayoral proclamation, the Lupus Awareness Purple Ribbon Day, hereby on May the 18th, 2018. My virtue of the authority vested in me as the Mayor of the City of Castle Hills do proclaim that day, Purple Ribbon Day, and present this to you as a proclamation from the City of Castle Hills. I would invite all business and local citizens and local religious organizations to support the cause of raising awareness of lupus by wearing a purple ribbon to support those who battle lupus. Your witness thereof, Timothy A. Howe.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Johnny? Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate you and we appreciate your organization. Just recently, I know that two of our longtime residents have contracted lupus, and I was hoping to have them here tonight to be able to acknowledge the fact that we, as a city, are acknowledging it also. So, but they couldn't make it. So, so thank you very much for what you do, what your organization does, and please let us know if there's anything else we can do.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Okay, the next one is, the next one is a certificate of resignation. Folks, that's a joke, okay? Most, most people that know me, I really did misread this, okay? That's pretty good, wasn't it? Hope we caught that on tape. Okay, certificate of recognition. The City of Castle Hills recognizes Delaney Dwar. Delaney, are you here this evening? Thank you so much. Delaney, I don't want to belittle the beginning of this by anything that just happened. When you get older, you'll understand. She is a seventh grader at St. George Episcopal School. She won first place in the seventh, eighth grade category in the San Antonio Book Festival 2018 Fiction Contest with her story Crushed. She won $500 for her school, $500 for herself, Whataburger for a year. I'll get to know you a little more. And rode on the grand marshal's float in the Texas Cavaliers River Parade during Fiesta. Delaney, I want to thank you not only for, for your innovative thoughts in writing that story, but also being a leader and being, to, to earn this award. You and people like you will be the future of our country, and I, as the Mayor of the City of Castle Hills, salute you for winning this. Moving right along. The next item we have on the agenda is the, this is non-agendemic items. I would remind everyone that there is a three-minute limit regarding non-agenda items and citizens to be heard. So with that said, first on the list is Mr. John Kenny.
John Kenny, 103 Briar Cliff. Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to take a few seconds. I know we've been friends for several years, and I keep bringing this up. I have this battle every year, twice a year, with brush pickup. If I have more than three bags, they don't take anything, and I think that's a dumb rule. Take three bags, come back the next week and take three more. I have had brush clippings out in my alley for a week and a half. I got a love note on my door from, from Public Works that it had excessive brush. If any of you would like to see pictures, I took pictures of this brush. You can come by the alley. I'll be waiting for you out there, because tomorrow morning, I'll probably be the one out there loading up the garbage truck, because our Public Works guys won't pick up brush. And with that, I also have a picture of how my garbage cans are always thrown back in my garbage can area. If you'd like to see those pictures, I'll show those pictures to you also. I think it's ridiculous that if we don't have our garbage cans in the right place and covered and blah, 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 and this rule and that rule, they won't pick up garbage. But then after they do pick up garbage, they just throw the cans back however they want. I'm tired of it. I just wanted to make an official comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny. You do note under citizens to be heard that we cannot respond to a citizen, but what we will do is make sure that the city manager gets in touch with Mr. Kenny, along with Mr. Harada, and let's see what we can do to correct this issue as quickly as possible. Okay, next on the list is Ann Fitzgibbons. Excuse me, ma'am.
Thank you very much for having me. I live at 205 Sheffield Place, and the reason I'm here is, my husband and I have lived in Castle Hills for over 15 years, and we're having an issue with our alley. At least, your alley maybe is functioning. Ours is barely functioning, and the reason it's an issue for us is, it's the only place we can park off the street. We have no circle drive, we have no driveway from the street to the back. The only place we can park is off the alley. We are going through major construction right now with, I think it's AT&amp;T. We have not been offered any kind of notification that they'll be working in the alley, but our experience has been with AT&amp;T, with Grande, and with Time Warner. They come in, they use the alley as an easement, as they have a right to, but they never put the alley back in the condition that it's supposed to be. I've contacted Public Works one time, and I think in the 15, over 15 years that we've lived here, they have filled one pothole. I know that construction's going to be a while, but I would appreciate it if Public Works would go through each of the alleys as the construction is done and make sure that these contractors are held to what they're supposed to do, which is to put our alleys back to the way they're supposed to be. I know that from experience and looking at the City of San Antonio, these alleys go by the wayside. We have weeds growing, the blacktop is disappearing slowly but surely, and I'm very concerned with the construction that's going on right now, that it's going to be that way. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Ms. Fitzgibbons. Okay. Ryan, will you make sure that you get with Rick and we identify the area involved in, behind 205 Sheffield, and also, for that matter, any alley areas that could be a problem with passage of vehicles that exit or entrance from those alleys? Thank you so much. Third on the list here is Jana Baker.
Jana Baker, 304 Fox Hall Lane. I would like to thank all of the new and old elected officials on their recent election, and I also, the purpose of my whole comments tonight are about the Fiesta event that we had. It was the most spectacular we've ever had, and I want to thank Judy Crawford and John Kenny for all their efforts in making that happen. And I also want to congratulate our first-ever Fiesta Queen and Princesses, but I think that there is another group of people that we need to recognize, and I hope that the Fiesta Committee and the council would agree. I think we need to, since we are a part of Military City USA, I think we should honor those who have sacrificed the most for us, and not just because they've donated money to become a queen or because their parents are on council, but to honor those who have truly sacrificed for us, and those are our military veterans. We should honor a veteran every year, every day, but we can make a special event where we honor them during Fiesta. During this last election, I had the honor to meet a neighbor of mine, Daniel Thornhill. Daniel is a wounded warrior. He served two tours in Afghanistan. During his last tour, he lost both legs above his knees. He suffered significant burns on his hands, where his fingers burned off and fused. He also suffered a spinal cord injury, but he was one of the most amazing people and very positive regardless of what his physical injuries were. And it's people like Daniel and the sacrifice they have made for all of us to be able to be here tonight, to speak, and to openly have free elections and to have Fiesta parades. And that's why I think I would really like to see this city step up and recognize the people who sacrifice and make all of this possible for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Okay, that was it on citizens to be heard. I'm going to move item announcements by the Mayor and council members up to now. So, we're going to start with Douglas. Douglas, do you have any comments or things to say regarding anything you want to talk about?
You've got me for two more years. That's all.
What'd he say?
Two more years.
Oh, two more years. Okay, good. Mr. Paul, did you have any comments or, or whatever you'd like to say, sir? This is your time. You've got three minutes.
Sure. It's not going to take that long, is that much? I've served the city for 12 years, forum on council. I've done most all the committees and everything that I've been asked to do. I've done it to the best of my ability on what I think is right for the city. I'd like to thank the citizens for allowing me to serve them, for doing this, and thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Paul. Ms. McLean, did you, did you have any comments or, for the three-minute time?
Just, just a reminder that we are having our first annual citywide garage sale this year. It will be the weekend, February, not February, Friday, June 1st, Saturday, June 2nd, and Sunday, June 3rd, your choice of dates that you want to participate.
Thank you so much. And there is information regarding that at the city offices. Is that correct, or online on the city website? Is that correct? Thank you, Minnie. Ms. Scott, did you have any comments or anything for the public? I'm sure you do, Mr. Trevino. Go ahead.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. So, I wanted to thank everybody for having the opportunity to serve the City of Castle Hills the past two years. It has been an incredible adventure of learning about our city and the unique problems that we face, and working with people in different departments outside of our city to try to make our city a little better. I may be done working on this side of the dais, but I have no intention of being done working on the other side. So, if there's any assistance that I can be, please feel free to contact me. Everybody has my cellphone, and I look forward to seeing you all at the next event in the Commons.
Thank you, Mr. Trevino. Okay, first of all, I want to congratulate, as I did on Nextdoor, the three candidates that, that won in this past election, and thank everyone who got out and voted. That's an important right that everyone has, and whether your candidate won or lost, that's a democratic process, and that's what it's, that's what it's all about. So, we come together and we, and we work out our differences and we recognize and respect the ideas of all, okay? Because that's, that's the way it works up here. I do want to point out that we do have two of our council members going to the Texas Municipal League Leadership Academy, starting tomorrow and the next day. That's Ms. McLean and Ms. Scott. They will be gone for two days. This does include a graduation and bring back the knowledge of how municipal government should work. So, thank you both for taking your time out. This is your phase two, 30 hours, I believe, and we'll count towards college credit, which I'm sure you all don't need, right? Or do, I don't know, but anyway. Also, on a little serious note, you know, we have a lot of things happening around our country, and a lot of things that happen, and, and they catch us by surprise. And I've been talking to other cities, I've been talking to residents, I've been talking to just about everyone regarding this, and it's the protection of our citizens in this area. So, starting in the next couple of months, we are going to install metal detectors. So, if you would like to come to a meeting, please make sure that you get here a little early, because we're going to act like we were at the airport. Hopefully, not as stringent, not as stringent, but we are taking action in order to not only protect ourselves up here, but also with additional exits and things like that. For those of you who don't know, the mayor's in charge of the property of, and I am not going to have to explain to anyone why we didn't take this action at this time. You never know when it's going to happen. Probably, it wouldn't be, obviously, it would not be one of our citizens, but we don't know who comes in and out of those doors. It's not a required sign-up thing. So, anyone at any time could walk in here and make a tragedy of this building very, very fast. So, we're going to try to have this up and running in the next 30 days, and I would just, this is the second time we've brought this up, and I would like to make sure that you know, when you get here, if there's a line, that it is for a purpose. So, with that, I do also want to bring up the Fiesta, and I bring this up in a, in a positive way, because Jana came forward and she talked about what a great Fiesta this was, and I'm going to echo her sentiments. This was the best ever. Next year, we're going to have to get a bigger boat, as they said in Jaws, okay? What that, what that also means is, they put on a heck of a show. I've never seen anything like it. We lost a ton of money, a ton of money, for the first time ever. So, what, the reason I'm bringing that up is because these individuals work very hard, and I would like to promote the CHCO, because that's where they get their funds. And we have, we have movies that, that the CHCO offers and other civic events, and, and I'd ask you to support those, because this is where the money comes from, and it comes from sponsors, and it comes from, I believe there's individual residents who actually put up the $1,000 or whatever it is in order to do this. But this year, it didn't work, and they lost a lot of money. So, I would ask that we do, as a community, come together and at least support our CHCO, which is, came from our homeowners association, I believe, and, and help these people next time around. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on. We're going to move on to the consent agenda, which is approval of the city council minutes. The first one is special meeting held on March the 27th, 2018, and the second is the work session held on March the 27th, 2008. Is there anyone that would like to pull any one of these two items on the consent agenda, Do I have a motion to move the consent agenda forward? Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Is that approving it or moving it forward?
It's approving it.
I have some changes to the minutes.
I just asked that, a second.
No.
Yes, I did.
I asked you about pulling it, but I have some changes to the, the minutes from the special meeting.
Hang on. What we're going to do here, is, does anybody have a item that they want to pull and ask and talk about?
Yes, I would like to pull the minutes from the special meeting, please.
Ms. McLean, go ahead.
I believe that the, there are some inaccuracies in the, the description under discussion item under Roman numeral one. I don't believe that I advised council that the city attorney had updated the ordinance to include language. I'd like to go back and make sure that that tracks the proper language, and I, there was one other change. There was discussion, but I think the discussion was twofold. The first, the first motion that I had made had to do with the language tracking, the TABC language, and then the second was on the, adding the language that actually gave a variance to CHCO to have alcohol for this particular event, and so I just want to make sure that the minutes reflect that correctly.
Did you get that, Minnie? Okay, and that is in addition to the minutes as, as read. Okay, thank you. Ms. Scott, did you have anything? Anyone else? Thank you, Ms. McLean. I'm sorry, I didn't word that poorly. Okay, so with that said, we have the, let's go along and move ahead with the approval of the consent agenda. Let's have a motion, please. We had Mr. Paul, no, we had Mr. Douglas Gregory, and we had Trevino. Do you all agree with the update on the consent agenda, please?
Yes, sir.
Okay, with that said, all in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you very much. All right, let's move on to new business. I'm moving item number four up to the front, which is conduct a public hearing and act upon a zoning commission recommendation to deny the removal of the word existing from Section 50-497A5 of the zoning code, which currently states A5-day nurseries, preschools or kindergartens in conjunction with an existing public, private, or denominational school having a curriculum equivalent to grades 1 through 12 of the public school system. Mr. Brennan?
Mayor, it's my understanding that the zoning commission, after public hearing and discussion, denied the application that was submitted by the French school to delete the word existing from the current section 5497A5, which is a special exception provision in the, in a residential district. It's also my understanding from, I wasn't there, from people who were there, that there was public support for making some change or accomplishing some means of authorizing the proposed French school in the location that they proposed, which is at the Castle Hills First Baptist Church facility. Different proposals were made and kicked around. I think, from what I've heard, the sympathy of the commission was to, to figure it out in some way, but there wasn't any consensus that passed, so the recommendation, or the application was denied. It then moved to you all, the city council, and if there is an approval of something, it's going to require a supermajority vote, which would be four out of five, because there was a denial at the zoning commission level. I, I came up with some wording that I think would accomplish the, the goal, if, if the goal of the city is to take some action, to approve the, the French school, and my, my suggested wording would be to add a new subsection A6 to the list of, of schools that could be approved, such as this French school. And A6, and my recommendation would be to say, "A day nursery, preschool, or kindergarten located on a property for which the primary entrance to the nursery, preschool, or kindergarten facility fronts on the commercial corridors of Northwest Military Highway or West Avenue." And the, the effect of that would be to limit the location of those kinds of schools. And the, the effect of that would be to limit the location of those kinds of schools to the main streets, the, the commercial streets. And I think that works because the, the purpose of the other section, it's already on the books, is to prevent the spread of more schools into residential neighbors, neighborhoods without, you know, complete happiness of everybody, which that's always hard to achieve. And I would like to point out that where, whatever is written into the code will require an SUP from the city council, which means that the city council will have absolute control over whether a projec, a, a proposed school would, would come into existence under any of the rules that we currently have. So, I, I assume, Mayor, that there are probably people in the, in the public that would like to comment on the school, and possibly there would be some comments regarding what I just said.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan. Okay, I also just got a text from the chairman of that board, so what we'll do is we'll go ahead, since we are in the middle of a public hearing. Let me see who signed up for that. Let's see, this is item number four. Yes, 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 yes. Okay. So, anyway, what we'll do is we'll go, we'll go ahead and move forward. Let's go ahead and get a, start off with the first one, which would be Stephen Ackley.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
If we were to postpone this to another meeting, do we, when would be the appropriate time to make that motion, Mr. Brennan?
I'm sorry, what was the question? If we postpone it, what?
If someone were to make a motion to postpone this to our next council meeting, since the zoning commission couldn't come to a, an agreement about an alternate language, when would be the appropriate time to make that motion?
Could do it right now, if you.
I thought we were in a public hearing, Mr. M.
Yeah, well, you know, I think it would be, Ms. McLean, a kind of a courteous thing to go ahead and hear from the public before that type of a motion is made, but, you know, there's no rule that says you can't make it anytime.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McLean.
Stephen Ackley, one eighteen West Castle Lane. I, I think, as most people know, I've been a stalwart opponent of anything that goes on at the Castle Hills First Baptist Church for many, many years. However, you know, with our recent tiff with the basis school, for example, I think we, it came to the resolution that there are things that are appropriate to go into that school. And it's kind of an irony that the French school, which is a very, very small school compared to what basis had in there, has to be denied on it when we had to basically muckle under to what, to let the basis school in there. So, I, I'm most in agreement with Mr. Brennan's language on this. And the history on that, I think it was that the, the ordinance was put in with the word existing on it in order to do exactly what Mr. Brennan said we were trying to prevent, and that's to expand into the residential neighborhoods. I think this change in the ordinance would effectively do that and also allow better uses for those commercial facilities like the CH school and the, and the French school that's going to come in. I was able to talk to the, the people at the French school. It's a very nice arrangement that they have. The number of students is very small, and I, I think they would be a, a welcome addition to the neighborhood and, in our, in our area. So, I encourage that the council take on the change in the language that Mr. Brennan has proposed on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ackley. Next on the list is Clyde, wait a minute, I'm sorry, is Jackie Ackley.
Thank you, council and mayor. I'm Jacqueline Ackley from one-one-eight West Castle Lane. I really think there's sort of two issues here. They are intertwined because consideration of changing the ordinance was to allow, or maybe not allow, the French school to come to that property. But the ordinance itself must be very carefully considered and please, well-written in all means. I, I think one of the most important things about the ordinance is to make sure that the property that the church sits on, which is zone A residential with SUP for church, is not made into commercial property through the back door, say, of allowing daycare centers, even if they face Northwest Military Highway, to exist for profit in, in, in zone A residential property. I couldn't have my home as a daycare center and reap commercial profits from it. I don't think it's right for them. I do understand that a kindergarten in conjunction with a school makes sense. You begin your pupils young, they continue the curriculum. I do think the phrase "in conjunction" needs to be well-defined. It shouldn't just be a daycare commercial sitting on the front of the property facing Northwest Military Highway wherein the conjunction is shared parking lot, or shared restrooms, or shared lunchroom. I think maybe the phrase "have the same administration as a school," maybe we don't want it one through twelve, but most preschools and kinders do go along with at least an elementary school, one through five, one through six, whatever elementary school is in that area of the country. So, I think in addition to deleting the word existing, if we're going to go that route, there needs to be additional changes to the ordinance, too, to make sure that the school is under the same administration as the academic progress, one through six, one through five, one through twelve, but, and maybe further define what "in conjunction" means and what grade levels it needs to be associated with. Those were my main thoughts. And then, if the ordinance is written well, then entertaining the French school would be next, but a separate issue. And my understanding is that, at least initially, they're only planning to bring preschool, kindergarten, plus or minus, first grade, so they wouldn't even finish, fit or meet the requirements of an ordinance, as I was describing, where you have to have at least an elementary school to bring in the, the preschoolers. What I really want to avoid is having commercial daycare centers on zone A residential property. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ackley. Also wanted to make everyone aware that the chairman of the zoning has entered the chambers. And Joe, I'm going to add your name to the list here. Okay, I just wanted to make sure you knew that. Okay? All right, let's move on to the next person that's signed up, and it is Janet Baker. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Okay. The next item, the next person on the list is Leslie Winger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to commend Ms. McLean's intention to postpone this because it is a very complex issue and shouldn't be decided that quickly. But I do want to mention that I'm sure I'm not the only person in the city who has heard repeated complaints from residents throughout the city about the traffic on Northwest Military and West Avenue, particularly during school times. So, this is a really major issue, and moving, you know, anything that we're talking about to those streets is not going to help anything, it's simply going to exacerbate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Winger, for your comments. Okay. The next person, Al, you're signed up, but I'm not sure what it was for. Al Molinar?
I wanted for those, mayor.
For what, sir?
I wanted to answer this question.
Oh, thank you. Okay. All right, let's move on to Charles Mutt.
Good evening. I'm the president of the Alliance Française. I'm here in support of the French school. We're one of the partners to this school. To my knowledge, this is the first time a school like this will be started in the city of San Antonio in its history. I think it's a very fine, well-conceived school, very small. I think the class, if I'm not mistaken, is going to be limited to, I think, forty students, forty-two students. I was here last week at the zoning commission hearing. I would simply respectfully ask that this body make its decision to alter, you know, your zoning ordinance in a timely fashion. Otherwise, it will jeopardize the viability of this school opening this fall. You have parents that are interested in attending, but if you don't have a location to represent and invite parents to, you will have parents that will be skeptical about the viability of the school. They are running out of time. We are, if I understood, the zoning commission decision was to push this off to the first week of June with no assurance that it was going to be decided then. So, if we're into July, you're talking about six weeks to tell parents, we have a viable school. And I don't think that that's going to be a good option. So, respectfully request that whatever decisions, and we certainly understand and acknowledge the importance of this ordinance and what you're trying to accomplish by keeping daycare centers from opening in residential areas. We respect and acknowledge that. But it seems to me that with the help of your attorney and a good wordsmith, you could come up with language that accomplishes your goal in a timely fashion. I thank you for the opportunity to, to speak to you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Thank you, Katia. I don't want to wreck your last name, so if, go ahead.
Thank you. The city council, we'd like to ask the city council to consider amending the code in order for our school, the French School of San Antonio, to request a special use permit to occupy the building at the Castle Hills Church complex because right now, we're not able, our case is not, is not, we're not able to present our case to the zoning commission. And I think we just wanted to say that we see a lot of interest in the school from the community. We think it will be a great addition to the community. We're confident we'll be a good neighbor. We are going to be a very small school with only forty-two students in this year, and we aim to add one grade each year. So, this year, we're only enrolling from preschool to first grade, and we're adding each grade every year until we reach fifth grade in two thousand and twenty-two. And by twenty, two thousand and twenty-two, we're not going to be even more than one hundred and fifty students. I think we'll be around a hundred students by the year of two thousand and twenty-two. This is really insignificant comparing to the current tenant at the Castle Hills Church bases, who is moving out this August. They're moving out. Those facilities are going to be unoccupied. So, that's why I think it will be, it's, it's good for the building to be occupied, and we're going to be really, really small. We're also offering before and after-school care, so this way, we will offer a staggered drop-off and pickup time, so there won't be any traffic impact in the city. We're also in discussion with the local businesses, like Selavi Bakery, to provide lunches for our school. So, I think with relationships, we will bring additional dollars to the city budget. We also thinking about organizing our Bastille Day celebration in July at the Veranda, Castle Hills, Castle Hills. So, I think through this event and, and other events, maybe with the local vendors, we will also bring additional money to the budget, city budget. So, overall, I think we are, we just want to respectfully ask you to amend this code to let us be heard at the zoning commission and to present our case. And, thank you.
Thank you, Katia. Next, we have Ashelle.
I was here with Katia because we are co-founder of the French School of San Antonio, so she said everything we, what needed to be said. I just want to, to say that we, even if we are enrolling very young students from two years old and only until first grade this year, we are not a daycare, so because I heard one of the citizen was afraid that daycare will open in your city. So, we are a real school, and our administration will be like a school administration. We are a school, and we will have a grade each year, and we will be a full elementary school. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ashelle. Okay. Let's see if there was anybody else signed up for this. Al, you're going to hold. Okay. We're going to move into a situation where, excuse me? Or Joe? Joe's down here. Joe, would you mind coming up, please? We have with us Joe Isbrand, chairman of zoning.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I apologize for being late. I didn't know you were going to move it up on the agenda.
We moved it up as all our fault.
But I'll let you know, I still managed to drive the speed limit and get here in just two or three minutes, so I'm grateful to live in this city.
Well, that's good to know, but you are under oath, so.
Mayor and council members, just to give you the, the context of the action that we took, the zoning commission met last Monday, May the first. At that time, we had two items on this agenda. One was to consider a change in the zoning ordinance. The second was to consider the application of the French school. I think it's important to distinguish this because the action that was taken by the zoning commission, I believe, and they can represent their own opinion, but I believe the action that was taken on item number one regarding the change in the zoning ordinance is irrespective of the application that was before us because we had not considered that yet. The zoning commission voted unanimously, that's a five-zip vote, to recommend to you that we deny, that you do decline to change the language in the ordinance, specifically the term existing that is currently in there. I would remind you that last September twelfth, you voted unanimously, by the way, to insert that language into the ordinance. And this goes back to my first point. I think it's very important that when we look at an ordinance, we really question whether it is good public policy for an ordinance to be pliable, that we change it each time an application comes before the zoning commission. I believe that's what the concern of the commissioners was. As Mr. Brennan has indicated, the zoning commission is certainly open to considering what is in the best interests and the welfare of this community, but I believe there is hesitation when every time you have an application or an applicant come before the zoning commission, you also have a request to change the zoning ordinance, which really should stand the test of time, I would hope. So, eight months ago, it was changed. Now, the ask is to change it back again, and I think, again, this is why the zoning commission unanimously made the determination that it did. Lastly, I would say that, as you know, because you appointed them, that there is a zoning ordinance committee that has been established to review the entire zoning ordinance for the city of Castle Hills. They have worked tirelessly for well over a year and have begun to present their recommendations to the zoning commission. We have had a number of work sessions, public sessions, on that to be able, with the intention of being able to present to you a comprehensive recommendation on a change in the zoning ordinance. So, again, I think the intent of the zoning commission would be to allow the commissioners to do their work, to work with the committee, to look holistically at the ordinance and how it applies across the board uniformly, rather than, as it may pertain to one particular application that may have come before the commission. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. I hope that helps to guide you in your process.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Since there's no one else signing up, let's get out of the public hearing mode, get into the other, and then if you'll stay close, sir, I would appreciate it. Okay, since there's no one else signed up to speak, on this matter, what we'll do is we'll close this public hearing, and it is now seven nineteen. So, this public hearing is closed. hearing is closed. And with the matter on the table, oh, sorry. Okay. Shut the timer off. Okay. With this matter on the table, do I have a motion to, or should I go ahead and read this again, Mr. Brennan, so they'll know what the motion is?
I don't think you need to read it again, mayor, just whatever motion somebody wants to make.
All right. So do I have a motion to move this forward?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we postpone consideration of this until it goes back to the zoning commission, and they can adequately vet out additional language. I think we've got several good comments from Mr. Isbrand and from Mr. Brennan and Mrs. Ackley and other citizens regarding language. And I feel like there are too many variables to be considered for us to make a decision about language up here at the dais tonight. So my mo, yeah.
And I second that, also with the comment that we have a zoning commission for a reason. And they have expressed that they would like to support possible alternative language. And I feel that we should, I second it because I feel we should give them the opportunity to do so. They have some very, very good points. And when you're dealing with children two to six, and it falls into the daycare category. So I make a second to motion that.
We have a motion, and we have a second on the table. Now we're going to go into discussion. Douglas?
What is the date certain that this will reappear, if it does?
Does anybody know when the next zoning meeting is?
June 5th was the date stated, and our next council meeting is June 12th, as far as a voting council meeting. Our meeting on the fourth Tuesday is a workshop.
Thank you.
Frank?
Well, I'm conflicted on this. I agree that it would be a good fit, but I realize if we do something to accommodate just one situation, like was mentioned by Mr. Isbrand, then we open the door, what if the school leaves? I'm all in favor of having the school there, and if there's any way that we could expedite, and Mr. Brennan, I don't know if they can call a, like council can, call a special meeting, but there's too many variables on how to do this wording. And once we do it, it needs to stick. So how do we get that done as expeditiously as possible? I don't think anybody up here is against the school. It's just making sure that we close the doors.
Is that a question for me?
No, it's for Mr. Brennan. No. Is there any way that the zoning can call a special meeting if they need to, or whatever, to try to close the timeframe on this, to try to help the people who want to come into the city, don't want to be negative against it, but we need to make sure it's done properly. And like I said, I don't think there's anybody up here that's against a school coming in there. But if we do A, we affect B, and that's what we have to be careful of.
Certainly. Yes, the zoning commission can have a special meeting. I think we'd have to have it out far enough to where they could give the proper publication. I think this would have to be republished or re-noticed in the newspaper, or however the notice period is handled. So I assume you're looking at least a couple of weeks before they could reconvene.
But is there a way, they wouldn't have to pay additional fees for that, would they?
Yes. If I understand the action, y'all are referring this case back to the zoning commission, so for further consideration. So it wouldn't be a start of a new case, but the notice part would have to be complied with, I assume at the expense of the city.
Okay. Thank you.
No additional comments?
Ms. Scott?
Yes, I have nothing but excitement about the possibility of having the French school here, but I do think we need to stand behind our vote to continue to keep the wording as we worded it. And like I stated before, I don't have anything else to add, other than we have a zoning commission for a purpose, and they would like, they're requesting in here for more time to get that language just right, to make this a possibility without opening it up for other situations to come up that would not be ideal, like this one has the potential to be. So thank you.
Mr. Trevino?
Yes, sir, mayor, thank you. I would have to agree with the rest of my colleagues and Mr. Isbrand. I feel like there's a bit of a dangerous precedent when we change the zoning with each case. It's not to say that I don't think the French school would be a great addition to the city of Castle Hills, but I'd like to make sure that we're not making accommodations with every application. I think that the rules should exist for a reason. That being said, I do have a couple of quick questions, mostly because this is probably my last time to ask them. But would the traffic rules still apply from basis regarding left turns onto Winston?
That would have to, that's something y'all would have to decide. I assume when you, if there is a change in the code to where this school could come to the city, so to speak, y'all still will have to consider the SUP. And the SUP is where you make all the rules and regulations, and I assume that that would probably be one that y'all would consider a continuation of.
Okay, Mr. Brennan, well, I'll trust that you'll bring that up when the time comes, if it does. And the other one would be that, obviously, I don't think this would trigger the traffic impact analysis standard, which is, I believe, 150 cars for traffic. But my question for you, Mr. Brennan, is how does that work, seeing as the school plans to slowly grow to almost four times their size? I mean, at what point does that become an issue? Just educating myself.
Well, it's back to the same thing. That's a consideration you'll have to make if you all consider an SUP, the future growth of the school as well as its present size, and what traffic issues might arise, as Ms. Winger said.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Mott, what did you say the times were, the timeframes were, as far as putting this together, as far as your students to be able to, telling parents and everything for the school to move forward? What's the deadline?
I'm not sure that there's a hard deadline. The issue is that the school intended to invite parents, prospective parents to the school as early as we can.
So as you know, all parents are making decisions already in January, February for schools. And we've been in contact with our parents, and we keep telling about the potential locations since January. But so every month, we're basically losing parents because they need to make sure their children are in school in August. So for us, if we delay this until June, and everyone is traveling in summer, so parents will probably won't even reach them. So for us, it's really critical, the timing, it's really jeopardizing our business and school.
But your school starts in September, is that correct?
It starts August 27. So for us, this is.
The school will be following the calendar of Northeast Independent School District.
Okay, so it'd be August 20.
So it will be starting toward the end of August.
Okay.
And as an organization that hosted an informational meeting for prospective parents, and as a parent myself, you want to know that the school is on a solid foundation, that it has a facility, so that you don't sign up for something and pay a registration fee, only to find out it's not going to happen this year, you have to wait another year.
I understand.
So after last week's hearing, I advise the school to begin to look for alternatives. If this pushes beyond first week of June, they will have to move to an alternative location or jeopardize the entire academic year.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
May I make a couple of comments on this? First of all, I'm proud of the way that the school went to the residents first. I think this is the first time ever that anything has happened on that property over there, where the school has organized itself without any help from city or anything else, and went to these people in order to meet with the leaders of that area. And I didn't have anything to do with that, believe it or not. No, it's all about me, but I didn't have a thing to do with that. And by contacting these residents on their own, I think we're doing the school a disservice, is what we're doing. Mr. Brennan, there is no workaround in order to get this done. This reminds me of a prisoner exchange on the South Korean-North Korean border. Something needs to be changed, and we're going to exchange prisoners here. Can we do this after the fact, or do anything at all in order to make this work for them tonight?
Well, that was why I came up with this suggested wording. And Dr. Ackley's suggestion to get rid of the words that I use, a day nursery, just to limit the possible authorization to preschool or kindergartens, you know, on a property that is on one of these corridors, would get you there for the code. They're still going to have to go to a P&amp;Z meeting if y'all did make that change in the code tonight. They still will have to go to a P&amp;Z meeting to apply for the SUP and come back here for a final approval of the SUP.
Okay.
In the alternative, mayor, at the next meeting of the P&amp;Z, if wording could be approved by the P&amp;Z, they could also simultaneously recommend approval of the SUP based on that wording and move it back up for your consideration at the next meeting.
It's too late. No, it's not. It's too late.
Well.
Okay. All right. Well, with that said, then you're going to, excuse me?
I'm sorry, I have a question. Where is the alternative wording written?
Right here. I'm sorry.
So we don't have a copy. We're digging and digging for your alternative wording. Is it, we don't have copies of the alternative wording?
It's not in there. I just worked on it today and brought it with me. I'd be happy to read it again if that would help anybody. But essentially, what it says is there can be a preschool or kindergarten on a property with which the facility that it's in fronts on the commercial corridors of Northwest Military Highway or West Avenue. That's the guts of it.
Okay. Just have a couple more comments. Katia and Ashelle, I want to thank you for going to the residents. That's something that nobody has ever done, that I know of, and I've only lived here 64 years, to get yourself aligned with the community. And thus, from what I understand, and I could be wrong, the residents over there accepted that as a smooth alternative, at least the ones that I talked to. Unfortunately, there are boundaries that we have to live by, and it doesn't look like that there's an impasse in order to get it done in the timeframe that you do. I'm sorry that it's going to hurt the economic impact of our city with the first time ever having a school that was going to buy from a restaurant in our city, buy lunches, buy breakfasts, buy everything else. This is going to be a very, very unique situation. So with that said, I guess we're going to move forward with the motion in the second that Ms. McLean and Ms. Scott did, and this is going to be a roll call vote, please.
Can I ask Mr. Brennan another question? Would you repeat your last recommendation, or maybe it wasn't a recommendation, but your last suggestion that could also expedite it back to zoning and come this way?
The suggested wording was a new section, a subsection A6, and this doesn't touch the word existing. It leaves it in place for the prior section. But it says a preschool or kindergarten located on a property for which the primary entrance to the nursery, to the takeout nursery, to the preschool or kindergarten facility fronts on the commercial corridors of Northwest Military Highway or West Avenue would be authorized to seek an SUP for a school or kindergarten.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have a comment on this.
Sure.
I agree with Mrs. McLean that this should be brought forth at a future time. After we, I think we can rush through something and regret it later. And I'm agreeing with the motion to withhold this for the future.
I'm sure.
Although, I hope the French school will reconsider. If they can't do it right now, they might want to reconsider it next year. But if not, fully understand.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of comments. If Mr. Gregory's finished. I would like to amend my motion that if the zoning commission is able to have a meeting before the 5th of June, and they're able to push it up to help with the timing of this, that the motion would be to postpone our decision until after they meet, instead of mentioning the date certain of June 5th. And that way, we are open. If the stars align and they can meet earlier, and we can discuss this earlier, I would love it. But even with Mr. Brennan's language proposal, I still think there are some problems. Just taking out existing does not fix this, and just adding those commercial corridors, I don't think addresses the problems that we have all, that we were concerned about when we added the language.
Mr. Brennan, why, if they went ahead and moved forward on this, why couldn't we do this in a special meeting right after that, three days from today?
Well, you're going to have to re-notice this whole process, which means a public, and I don't remember exactly what the date publication is. I don't know many if you remember what the publication minimum is, but you're going to have to re-notice this thing. Now, one thing I have seen done that you might consider is stacking the city council meeting with the P&amp;Z, or the zoning commission meeting, to where there's a zoning commission meeting at, you know, 6 o'clock or 7 o'clock. Look at all this, make a decision and recommendation, and then at 7 o'clock, have the city council meeting to take it up and finish it. So, you know, you could do that in a couple of weeks, probably, if necessary.
And how much would that cost them in order to do that, to run this back through?
It's the same, it's the same thing. If we're pushing it back to zoning, they don't have to file any new paperwork. It's the same action.
The only thing extra cost is going to be the publication in the newspaper, and frankly, I don't know how much that is.
Okay. Katia, did any time schedule, Mr. Mott, of what you're thinking about?
I think it would be all the great, expedite the process, however you see fit. Can I clarify your motion, Ms. McLean, that you're changing the motion to modify?
Add an amendment, amendment to the motion.
Amendment to the motion, so that we can call a special meeting, and as Mr. Brennan is saying, stack them. So we have zoning followed by city council, so we can expedite this a little bit faster to help the school out, so this can be resolved in a faster, more timely manner. I do think it just needs a little bit more time. So am I correct in understanding that's what you're saying?
Yes, I was taking out the date limitations.
Take out the date limitations. So amending our amendment to let's have a special meeting on this as quickly as possible to get it resolved.
Who approves those meetings? Does the chairman call the meeting, or does the mayor call the meeting?
Theoretically, I think the chairman of the zoning commission at least consents or agrees to the timing that usually the staff schedules that stuff, you know, based on publication deadlines and.
Joe, would you consider moving that zoning meeting up in order to facilitate the timeframe?
I think I would have to ask Mr. Brennan for his counsel on that. Mr. Brennan, we announced at the meeting on May 1st that this matter would come back before the zoning commission at its June 5th meeting. So we have established that publicly as the date. Is that an issue, then, to change that date?
I don't think so, but that's why we've got to re-notice the public that there has been a change in the scheduling.
Yes, sir. That would, I mean, we're, as we've indicated, the commission is, you know, happy to deliberate this, and we do think it deserves deliberation. So what would be in the best interest of the city, we're happy to do.
Thank you, Joe. Okay, so it sounds like there's an amendment on the table to expedite this as soon, go ahead. To expedite this as soon as possible?
Yes, right. That is correct.
There's amendment on the table to expedite this as soon as possible. Do I have a motion?
It seems to me as soon as. It seems to me as soon as possible is awfully vague. I'd like a date certain.
Okay, how about tomorrow?
Mr. Brennan has already stated that there are certain publication deadlines and so, subject to what the law requires us to do, that would be the soon as possible.
That's very good. That's correct.
Would be, can we post notice in the newspaper tomorrow for the next possible date? Like go ahead and, or the next possible publication date for the newspaper?
Yes.
Post it, whether it's tomorrow or the next day when it can be put in to be published in Express News.
Yes.
To have it put in at the next earliest possible date to be published, publication. And then whatever the date is following publication, that would be the date for the meeting, for the new zoning meeting. Stack it with the city council, special meeting, and get that done.
How about any time, if you want a specific date, how about any time after May the 8th at 10 o'clock? As soon as the law allows, let's just, or the process allows, let's just do that and go on with it. Is that your motion, Ms. McLean?
Yes, that is my motion. So I guess we need a second.
You have a second for that motion?
Oh, we'll gladly second it.
Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second. All in favor? All opposed? Okay. Motion wins over. We now have them... That kind of took care of everything. Yeah, you don't have to go back to the original motion now. Okay. Thank you. All right, moving forward. Ladies, what we're going to do is we're as soon as possible, the law allows, we're going to go ahead and move, to go ahead and notify the public that we're making a change. The chairman of the zoning has agreed as soon as that, the law allows, that we are going to make that and then you'll be able to come back at, if it's done in the morning or whatever, it comes back. What is it, two weeks? About two weeks. Okay, which should at least give you plenty of time to do whatever it is that you would like to do. And that's the best we can do at this time. Okay? All right. Moving along. Let's go back to item number one, which is presentation and acceptance of the fiscal year 2017 audit and annual financial report prepared by Armstrong, Vaughn, and Associates. Debbie?
Good evening. I would like to start by thanking everybody that was involved this year. This was a little more difficult year. Laura and Nora both worked very hard to get information for us and get everything in a timely manner. So I'd like to thank both of them, as well as all the other city staff that we inevitably bothered. So you did receive an unmodified opinion and that is on page one of the financial statements. And that, what that means, after adjustments, your financial statements are fairly stated and materially correct. If you turn to page 13, this is the balance sheet. And in past years, we've just... This way? Okay. In past years, we've discussed your financial statements are shown several ways. You're shown, you show full accrual statements, which means that you see your financial statements with debt, fixed assets, compensated absence, and pension liability. Whereas on the modified accrual, which is the way you budget, you don't see those fixed assets on the financial statements. You don't see the pension liability. You only see what current resources you've spent and received. So we're going to go over the financial statements on page 13, which is the way you budget, again. So you had two major funds, your general fund and your street repair fund. Your total non-majors are collapsed in the back of the report. You ended the year with 8.4 million in assets. Of that, 5.2 million was cash and cash equivalents and another, almost 9 million, were your investments. You had liabilities of 225,777. Again, remember, this is your current liabilities. You had unavailable property tax revenue of 197,000 compared to the property taxes levied for future periods of 3.4 million. So at the end of the day, you had 4.6 million in fund balance. Of that, almost 3.3 million is unassigned. So you have that available in the next years. And remember, you assign or try to keep your unassigned fund balance at approximately six months. So you do have unassigned fund balance of approximately six months. You did increase your street maintenance by 36,000 or you're available for street maintenance. If you notice, one of the assigned for major vehicle purchases went down because you did purchase a fire truck during the course of the year. So you had saved $500,000 or over 500. You had actually had 636,000. But that 500,000 was spent this year, so we reduced the assignment for major funds.
I'm sorry, Debbie. Would you repeat that again as far as the fire truck was concerned?
Yes.
I didn't catch that.
You purchased a fire truck in the last fiscal year.
Right.
So that was, you had an assignment of 636,000 of your fund balance in the prior years. And so 500,000 of that, we reduced for that major purchase of the fund.
I got it.
Okay. Any questions on that? Okay.
What is an unavailable property tax revenue?
That's your property tax revenues that you budget for or you assess in, that become assessed October 1st, and I'll just use the year last year, 2017. And then they're available for spending according to your budget, January 1st, 2018. This, of course, would be exactly that, using those dates.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. So I'd like you to turn to page 15. These are the statement of revenues and expenditures. On the major fund, you know what, it might be better if you turn back to the comparative budget to actual on page 35. So this is your schedule of revenues and expenditures and changes in fund balance on page 35 and you see your original and final budget and then your actual amounts. So your total revenues were 6.6, little over 6.6 million. You had total expenditures of 7.7 million. So you had overspent by about 1 million, but then you had proceeds from your capital lease. So you signed a lease during 17 for the remaining balance of that fire truck and we have to recognize it because it's a current resource under modified accrual. So your total other financing sources were 552,424. So you had a net change in fund balance of a negative amount of 489,000. But I do want to point out that that 500,000 that you've spent, you had actually saved for in your future major equipment, that 500,000 that I just told you about. The other item that you had kind of gone over on that we saw in the minutes was your streets. You had had some street and sanitation, kind of a partnership with Saws and you did go over in that category your contract change orders for maybe gutters and curbing. So...
Can we make that clear on what that was? I mean, we're not going to go item per item. What was the dollar amount of the change orders?
I think they amounted to about $200,000, 236, maybe.
Okay.
I can't remember the exact amount off the top of my head, but I know you discussed it in some of your minutes in December of 2017.
Was that paid to Saws? Is that who that was paid to?
No, it was paid to the contractor. You had some overruns. So there was a combination.
Okay.
Mayor, I believe those were the curbs on Danube.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you. I think we fought that battle, so we don't need to refight the battle. San Jacinto.
I'm just letting you know that that's where, you know, your budget did go over a little bit. So, okay. On the next page, 36, is your schedule of revenues and expenditures compared to your street revenue or street repair fund. And again, this is, these are repairs only. So your sales tax and total revenues license agreements were 296,000 and you actually had total expenditures of 225,000. So you were left with a positive net change in fund balance during the year. On page 38, just want to go over this again. This is your net pension liability and the related ratios. Sure you don't remember last year, but we kind of had an anomaly last year with the 2015 investment earnings going down so low. If you look midway down the page on 38, you'll see net investment income and it was 745,000 in 2014 and it dipped to 20,251 in 15 and then it's back up to 932,351. And that's due to changes in assumptions and assumptions about the investments. You are 86.56% funded at the end of the year. GFOA says anything over 70% is very good. So you're doing very good there.
Excuse me, Debbie?
Yes, sir.
Why don't we have this, that same page on 38, why don't we have for 2017?
Because that's based on the calendar year of TC or TMRS. So remember that your pension liability is set by TMRS. They give you the estimates and so they're a year behind in their assumptions.
Okay.
They're audited at the calendar year, just like you are. So you'll expect next month to get your new 2017 information.
Thank you.
Okay. On page 41, this is comparative balance sheet. And I just want you to kind of look at that and you can see, especially in your fund balance, some of the interesting items that occurred during the year. You had a, again, last year, you had assigned 536,949 for a major purchase from vehicles and you, we did release 500,000 of that during the year. Your street maintenance commitment went from 599,176 to 635,602. That occurred even as a result of your increased spending in the streets. And then you had unassigned fund balance that went from 3 million last year up to 3.3 million this year because your expenses increased, so that six-month estimate also increased.
Well, liabilities went down about a million dollars. If I'm reading it correct, at the bottom of 38.
I'm sorry. I'll go back there. So on page 38, if we go back there, your net pension liability was 2.0, almost 2.3 million.
Right.
And it did increase about 100,000, 103,000.
I was looking at the bottom page, the bottom numbers on it saying total liability and deferred inflows of resources and fund balance. That was all.
Oh, I'm sorry. On page 38, you're looking at...
I'm sorry, 41.
Oh, okay.
These pages are running circles on me. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So let me get this right because we all, I only got this this evening. So this is...
Well, my understanding is the PDF was in the package.
So our pension liability is now 2.29, $2,293,000. Is that a deferred compensation? Is that considered a deferred compensation?
It's a combination of the two. There's a footnote. So it is a defined contribution plan, yes.
What is our deferred compensation? Where is that number to be found?
And what are, what deferred, are you talking about compensated absences?
Yeah, deferred.
Are you thinking of a net pension liability?
Yeah, well, no, not so much net pension, but a liability of not taking, working as opposed to having a holiday and not taking, deferring that compensation.
Well, if you look at, I'll take you back to page 11. There's also a footnote in your financial statements, but if you go back to page 11, remember, we do have the full accrual statements. Now, the compensated absences don't show up on your modified accrual statements, only your full accrual statements. So if you look at page 11, you have compensated absences broken down into two areas. Due within one year of 73,657.
This is on page 11?
Yes, sir. It's about...
Okay, I got it.
Okay. And then you also have long-term, what's considered due in more than one year, of 294,000. And there is a table in the notes that you can...
For a small town, do you believe it is healthy for a small town to have deferred compensation?
Every town, every city has deferred compensation.
I understand that, but I'm saying, do you think it's a healthy thing?
I don't think it's unhealthy because you accrue. That just means that people aren't retiring maybe from the city because that's usually when you see a lot of your compensated absences going down. Where you may want to be concerned is if you have compensated absences because they're working overtime and they're not salaried and so they're receiving PTO based on that. So you may want to analyze that every year. For instance, your police officers have PTO and we can send you the schedule of what that is.
In your experience with the last recession, was there a spike of increasing, cashing in, cashing out of these deferred compensations in cities?
No.
There was not?
No. Any other questions? Then I'd like to quickly go over the letters. This year, we did, and I'm just going to go over these lightly. I want to point out that we did have 27 journal entries and there was a combination of journal entries, a little more than last year, but not many. You had a considerable amount of journal entries and then your bank recs weren't completely reconciled when we arrived. So I did consider that a material weakness. I do want to point out that some of the entries that we made went back to February of 2017, duplicate entries that had been made to the financials.
Would you repeat that again? Pull that mic a little bit closer to you, Debbie, if you can.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Would you repeat that again? About the 2017 February what?
You did have some entries that went back to about February 2017.
To make up on what was needed to be done there as far as adjustments?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. You also, again, hadn't reconciled your bank statements. However, as of today, or as of the date of the report, was April 30th. You had reconciled through March and Laura was quite effective at getting that done. We did have, that was your material weakness letter. Communications with those charged with governance is a separate letter and we break this down into several sections. We have the plan, scope, and timing and we completed that and what was originally communicated. We were compliant with all ethics requirements regarding independence. We had no disagreements with management and I don't think they consulted any other CPAs. We consider that you have significant policies and none of your policies significantly changed during the course of the year. We consider your significant accounting estimates to be the useful lives of depreciation or capital assets, the allowance for uncollectible receivables for property tax, and your net liability assumptions for mortality and investment returns. And again, the city has... And again, the city has no, really not much control over the net pension liability assumptions for mortality. That's established by TMRS. We had no significant difficulties encountered during the audit. We consider the significant financial disclosures to be TMRS. I, I think that's one that you want to read and, and read carefully, because it is a liability of the city, and all the estimates are performed outside of the city. Uncorrected and corrected misstatements. We did not have any significant uncorrected misstatements. We did request that Ryan and Nora and Laura sign a representation from management letter. Your public investment funds, this past year you did not approve an investment policy for two thousand and seventeen, nor did you, the investment officer, sign off on the quarterly investment reports until we were here doing the audit. On page four, last year we had said that you had internal control policy on Gatsby sixty-eight had not been established. Review of employee census data had not occurred. Again, we still have that comment on the financial statements. And you might just want to consider just sending out a quick note to your employees and say, please go on, onto the website of TMRS and check your, your census data. We've found in other cities where the person may have been born in nineteen thirty-six, and they had you down as age thirty-six, or you may be a female and they have you as a male. Now, you know, a lot of the, it would take a lot of these to change your financial statements or your financial pension liability significantly, but if the, if the errors continue to occur, it could, because naturally women are valued at age eighty-five, or, or that's when their estimated death is, and, and men only get seventy-five. So, you know, you want to make sure that those are, those estimates are correct and accurate. Last year we had also written up that you had statements that, that weren't appearing on your fin, on your financials, cash statements in particular. We were made aware of the other day that you do have another cash account that has not been put on your financial statements, and I just want to encourage you that that is really important. And number one, the city's EIN number is on that. If there's theft that occurs in that account, you, as council, are probably held responsible. And it's really important to be able to see everything that the city has outstanding. So I'm going to encourage that that be followed up with this year. We, we became aware of a couple new opportunities to enhance your operations during the year. You did not renew your letter of credit with Federal Home Loan Bank during the year, and so that covers your collateralization. However, as of now, you've renewed that letter, and your cash balances are fully rec, fully collateralized. Reconciliation of credit card receivable has not been regularly accomplished. As a result of that, you increased from two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty-two to twelve-thousand-six-forty-three. Although this is really immaterial to your financial statements, we, we hope that that's done. And again, it is now done through March two thousand and eighteen, and it may be done through April. I had not discussed that before I came tonight. The interim finance clerk had been performing both HR and payroll clerk duties without review from another key employee until December two thousand and seventeen. What had happened is you had a control in place last year, and kind of with the distribution of employees and people leaving, that failed to get done really most of last year. I think it was a control that your former city manager had kind of decided to, was not really necessary, so he, he kind of stopped doing it. But again, that's been rectified as of March two thousand and eighteen. I'm going to recommend also that with your monthly financial statements, that you start getting a balance sheet, because that balance sheet is pretty important for you to, to be able to identify those cash accounts. And I guess the assumption has always been that you were receiving those balance sheets.
We haven't done that in the past. You recommend that that's a procedure that we start.
Yes.
Correct, thank you.
The city currently is using Assist. You know, it's a very antiquated program. I remember when you implemented it, you had bought it and didn't really implement it for a couple years, because it is very difficult to use. It's kind of the lower end of Ncode, and at the time, you didn't have a lot of money to spend on an accounting software. And like most governments and nonprofits, you know, the, the software, the accounting software is usually the last place you want to spend things. But you've grown in the number of transactions that you have, as well as the amount of items that, you know, come from software that you have on Ncodes, such as your police tickets or your municipal court. So right now, you're having to manually enter, you know, a lot of data that if you went to one full system, it would upload a lot easier. And, and it just has a couple little flaws in it that are really difficult to, you know, manage. So I, we discussed this with your, your accounting staff, as well as your city manager, and feel that you're probably at the point where you need to consider something that's a little more robust. That's all I have. Do you have any questions for me?
I do. Debbie, how long are you planning to stick around this evening? There is an item on the agenda which I'd like your comments on when we get into, which we cannot talk about now, because it is on the agenda.
Okay. I, I can stick around. I do have to catch a flight at five AM, so.
Okay, so I'm going to move that item up after we finish this, so we can go ahead and get you out of here in time. Ms. Trevino, did you have any thoughts or comments regarding Ms. Debbie's presentation, please?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Would you mind skipping me for right now while I write a couple things down?
Oh, skip him for now, sure, sure. Ms. Scott, did you have any comments or presentation, comments or questions for Ms. Debbie?
I just want to thank you for, looks like, doing a very thorough job and pointing out in areas where we definitely look like we need improvement, things that didn't happen that should have happened. And I definitely appreciate that, so this next year we can make those corrections, so we don't have to follow, have the same mistakes happen again. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McLean, did you have any comments or questions for Debbie?
I have a few, or a few comments, I guess. I do understand this one a lot better than last year's audit. And I suppose that's just having a look at one. And I appreciate the comments to make our internal controls better. As I learned about some of the archaic accounting programs we were using, it really worried me as a, as a member of council sitting up here that there are a lot of opportunities for mistake or, or problems, like real legitimate problems of fraud or other things that could come up with some of the cumbersome, the cumbersomeness of some of that. So I appreciate the recommendations to tighten up some of that. But I wanted to clarify, because I know the budget ended up being a little bit skewed from what had been budgeted for the end of the year, but basically what the audit shows is that, that the major variances were because we ended up buying a fire truck early, and we spent more on infrastructure needs in repairing some streets than we had intended to do. And so the major variations are, in the budget, are based on those two items, which.
That's true. You did, you did buy the fire truck earlier, but I want to also point out that you had saved. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. Yes, you did go over budget in the fire, with the fire truck. But I want to point out that you had progressively stayed, saved over the years, and that five-hundred thousand that you saved and was in fund balance, you would never see in the financial statements, because it's fund balance. So it's not going to show up as part of revenue, nor part of expense, because it's just moved from your fund balance. That's why the fund balance decreased. So although it wasn't planned, you did, you had planned progressively to buy a major piece of equipment over the course of four or five years.
Okay, very good. And then the other thing, I know that last year we had a large discussion about the amount of reserves that we have, and we're still at that six, that six-month mark, and so we're well.
Yes, you are.
Say, we've saved well for that catastrophic day that you would need that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McLean. Mr. Paul, did you have any?
Well, I want to make it easy, just to bottom line it. We don't see any major exceptions, the things to the financial statement, mainly because we don't use a reserve for saving our money for the fire truck, so you have to take that out of direct cash. It's not like having a business financial statement, if I'm understanding, and I've had to understand a little bit of this over the past couple of years. So am I pretty much on target?
You're, you're true. I, I mean, you're, you're, you're on track. I know that the question was that capital lease. I'm showing that as proceeds. Well, governmental accounting is a little different, and so it requires you, if you take out a lease or a loan, to recognize that in the current year that you did. So, so that's what you're seeing. And yes, you, you had saved the cash, but you won't see it in revenue, because you had saved it, and it rolls over into your fund balance.
Well, and the last thing I had about the audit is I read thoroughly Mr. Rapley's letter, and it seemed to me like it was pretty involved in, and, and addressed all the issues that we need to do, that we maybe haven't done in the past. And I would just want to know your comment on that letter. Did you feel it was adequate for your audits? And for the future, what we want to put in place? His letter that he wrote on what we're doing, our recommendations, or did you present that to her?
No, Councilman Paul, that, it was in the, it's in the backup for the Ncode item. It wasn't necessarily.
Okay.
For the audit, per se. I didn't have.
Right, okay. I thought you addressed it to, to the accounting firm itself, though. Yeah, you did, but, okay. He addressed the issues. He addressed the issues we faced. And main thing is, is we got everything reconciled and ready to go, including our special funds as of March, the end of March, right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Paul. Mr. Gregory?
And on what page do we find the net for the year?
The net for what?
For the city for the year.
Well, you can find it in several places. Do you want to see full accrual, or do you want to see modified accrual?
Full.
Full. Okay. If you see, if you look on page twelve, this is your full accrual. So you had a change or an increase in net position of three-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-one-forty. And then that increased your net position from almost ten-point-four million to ten-point-seven. Remember, this is all your funds added together, basically, and shown on the full accrual, with all your compensated absences, debt, fixed assets. And if you wanted to see it just for the general fund, then you would want to look on page fifteen, and you would see that net change in fund balance of a negative four-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Okay.
Mayor, may I ask a couple questions now?
Of course.
Okay. First of all, I just wanted to thank you for pointing out the, what is it? Material weaknesses of internal controls. That's something that Mr. Rapley had brought forward to us as well, and I'm glad to hear that you're all on the same page, and I have faith that he'll be able to get that straightened out to avoid any problems. Fortunately, I believe that we've been lucky so far. You kind of winced a little bit when you said twenty-seven journal entries. Is that a lot? I don't understand what a standard is.
Well, you probably, you've, it's more than you've had in the past, but I do want to point out that two, three of them were given to me by Laura, and she came in and reconciled your cash, which did have a significant adjustment to it. I'm not, I, I, when I say that many journal entries, I did want to make sure that you understood that it was entries that probably should have been made over the course of the year, not just your ending balances.
Got you. The investment officer is the treasurer?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I'm assuming that you're talking about the antiquated software. Is my understanding that the data has to be manually transposed?
There, there's a lot of data that has to be taken from, for instance, your municipal court system and put in, same with permits, and put in directly into the system by journal entry. Another, just, you have, it's, it's not, it's probably what you would consider maybe a, a larger corporation operating on QuickBooks, or something similar like that.
So, in your professional opinion, you would probably recommend that we upgrade to a, a software that fits our size?
Care, careful, Mr. Trevino.
Just asking, just asking an opinion, sir, sorry.
I, I do think that, I mean, it's been a discussion every year with your city managers and your city staff, so it's, it's not a new one from my perspective.
Sure.
I will tell you that when you went to, when we came on board, you were on QuickBooks, but you had purchased Assist.
With all due respect, I think we ought to hold on that conversation until we get into the item on the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Trevino, for your edging around that, I guess. Or anyone else? Okay, so let's, was there anything else you had? JR?
No, sir, that's it.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's move forward, Debbie. Like I said, as soon as we, we finish running this through the gambit, we will, I'll get you out of here as soon as possible. We'll move the item up on the agenda that pertains to that particular item, and we'll go from there. Okay, let's, let's see, where are we? We are, okay, we got that. Okay, so let's do this. Let's get a, a motion. Let's get a second, and then hopefully we'll skirt by some discussion here, since we've already done this and get into the public portion of this. So let's, may I have a, a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Trevino, seconded by Mr. Paul. This goes into the discussion part of ours, since we've already had questions and answers. Did you have anything to add, Mr. Trevino?
No, sir, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Ms. Scott? Thank you. Ms. McLean? Thank you. Mr. Paul. Mr. Gregory, at this time, did you have any comments, please?
Could you give us the major, one major recommendation that we should do in the future, beginning now?
Reconcile your bank statements monthly.
On a monthly basis?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Okay, we have, what? We don't have anybody signed up for this. Hang on, let me make sure. We don't, we don't have anybody signed up for this. Wow. Okay, so let's go ahead and, hold on just for a second. Okay, with that said, let's go ahead and, we have a motion. We have a second on the table. All in favor of this? It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Let's move on. Thank you, Debbie. We're going to move up item number three to the next. And what that is, is consider and act upon ordinance number two-oh-one-eight dash oh-five dash oh-eight dash A, amending fiscal year two thousand and eighteen budget to purchase the Ncode Finance and Personal Management Module, an integrated government software from Tyler Technologies in the amount not to exceed thirty-one-thousand-five-hundred dollars, and authorize the city manager to sign the agree, the agreement. Mr. Rapley?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, mayor. As a result of this, um, actually segueing from the, the audit by Ms. Frazier, um, this is good timing, obviously, to bring this agenda item for, uh, discussion and action possibly, uh, by you as council. Uh, being here for the last few months and working, um, with, uh, and preparing this audit with Ms. Frazier and, and Laura Fegan. And, uh, let me, let me just give you some background too. And so all of y'all from council know, this is, this is Laura Fegan. And, um, she actually came at the recommendation of Ms. Frazier early on when I came into this role. Um, she's, uh, spent, uh, the last four years as Finance Director of Chavando Park, been Finance Director with other cities for, different cities for over 15 years. Um, she's done a great job, obviously, as Debbie had mentioned, that she's helped reconcile, evaluate some accounting practice and helped me, myself, craft, uh, the memo I wrote, particularly when we're examining the different modules and how Assist works with those current modules we have in place. Um, so if you have any questions, um, please let me know. And/or Laura is here to answer those questions. Um, again, as you heard from Ms. Frazier, the idea was bringing this forward, uh, to centralize our financial software with our permitting and municipal court, which, again, is already using INCODE. So we thought about the best idea to integrate and interface this. Um, so we tried to reduce and minimize errors or, or have the city susceptible to any fraud moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Uh, I wanted to, before we, we'll get a motion, we'll go a second on the table to move this forward and then we'll go into discussion. Before we get started on this, I want to remind everybody that anything that's said tonight is not to single out any previous, any previous financial officer or anybody who had touched the books up to this time. It's not to point out any previous or financial officer who touched the books up to this time. These are recommendations made by not only, uh, people who have come in and found some errors that had been going on back several years to, uh, easier ways to do things and, and, uh, more, uh, computer software-driven avenues to stop mistakes. Okay, with that said, do I have a motion to move this forward?
Mr. Mayor, I have a motion that in as much as this is going to be a consideration for $100,000 approximately over five years, I move, we move this consideration of this agenda item to the next council meeting in the first, in the next month of June.
Okay, we have a motion on the table from Mr. Gregory. Do I have a second for that motion? Mr. Gregory, will you repeat your motion, please?
In as much as this expenditure is a major expenditure of approximately $100,000, I move that we move the consideration of this item to the first city council meeting in June.
I will ask the council again. Do I have a second for this motion, please? One last time? Motion dies for lack of second.
Can I say something, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I guess it kind of bothers me a little bit that Councilman Gregory doesn't think we're smart enough to talk about this and work on it ourselves. That's what we're here for, that the citizens put us here for, and we're going to do our job.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Can we wait, uh, let's, you'll be able to, in discussion, be able to, uh, ta, uh, speak to that. So with that said, do I have a motion for this item to move forward, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Trevino. Uh, second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McLean. Okay, we have a motion. We have a second on the table. Uh, we are going to move forward. Uh, Mr. Trevino, did you have any comments regarding this? And I would like to steer any questions that have to do with Ms., uh, Debbie there quickly so she can get out of here for her plane flight tomorrow at 5:00 AM.
Yes, sir, mayor. Would it be, uh, appropriate to follow up on the question that I was asking earlier regarding her professional opinion?
As Captain Kirk would say, so moved.
Ms. Frazier?
I'm just going to say that, yes, I, we work with INCODE. We think it's a very good system. We work with INCODE or cities that have INCODE. We, um, we prepare audits for about 28 cities and a couple counties that, um, are on INCODE. And, um, it's very important to integrate it because sometime, I mean, you know, every, anytime there's human, um, capacity, there's always room for some errors to occur. There, it also is much more robust in your bank reconciliations and, and in your, um, check, check writing. So you have just a completely more robust system. And you, you have grown. Uh, you, you just need to maybe consider, if not INCODE, another, another type of accounting system that would be much more robust for a city this size.
I, I would imagine that the integration would probably lessen the load on whoever's having to input the data.
Absolutely, absolutely.
The way that I see it, it would probably end up saving some money administratively on the labor side. I mean, I don't want to quantify a number, but I imagine there would be a savings.
It should be, yes.
And there would also be the reduction for possible errors.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Scott, did you have any questions for, um, Ms. Debbie? Okay, thank you, at this time. Ms. McLean?
I don't have any questions for you about this issue. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Paul?
I don't have any questions, but I just want to be elementary for some people that may not be up on what we're really talking about. To me, the city's a corporation. We have five departments. And right now, these departments, each one have transactions within them. Some of these departments are not integrated to the central computer where the finance office is. And a lot of the information for Department A has to be manually transcripted and put in at the computer in the finance office. And it takes a lot of time and a lot of duplication can happen, a lot of errors potential. So it's just like a company saying, we've grown, we need a little bigger computer system to make sure we are integrated. And this system will integrate all these five departments. So if the parts department or if the, uh, fire department burps over there, it'll show up over here without going through a piece of paper. Am I correct there? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Mr. Gregory, do you have any comments for Ms. Debbie, please?
What is the single most benefit to Castle Hills if we purchase INCODE? The single most benefit?
I, I don't think you can quantify that to one benefit. Um, I, I think there's quite a few. It's, it's, you and I, I believe, are a business owner. I'm a business owner. And, you know, every couple of years or every five or 10 years, I have to look at, you know, the new accounting software that's out there, but also the new auditing software as well as, um, you know, what technology is there and, and how my company's grown. We've grown from, you know, 2003 having eight employees. So I don't do payroll for my company anymore. I, I have ADP. So I think you have to assess a bunch of different items that have occurred over the past years. The number of permits you're now doing, the number of tickets you're getting, um, the amount of payroll you're performing. So I think there's a lot of, um, things that you have to consider. If you remember, about five years ago, I recommended that you look into ADP because you had so many, um, issues with your payroll at that time. So I think you have to assess what's, um, important, but also look at how you've grown and how a system may, or you may need to adapt to a new system.
Is there a way to quantify whether the $100,000 we're, we were put into this system brings back to the city a benefit of at least $100,000?
I don't think you can. I mean, you know, accounting is usually the place that, or software for accounting is usually the place that you look at last because you don't want to spend money there. I mean, that's not typical of this city. It's, or atypical. It's typical of a lot of cities. You know, it's a huge investment. I understand that. But it's also to ensure that you're getting accurate reports. So I, you know, you, I don't think there's a way to quantify the $100,000, no.
Last year notwithstanding, if you go back two or three years prior to this, when we weren't using INCODE, would you have recommended INCODE three, two or three years ago?
I think we discussed it two or three years ago. I think we discussed it early on quite a bit. Um, I know I discussed it with former mayor, um, several times because your transition was very, very rocky.
As I know, INCODE has been, has come into the city about 12, 15 years ago. It started here and then there. It's sort of like an octopus. It's slowly, uh, taking over one department after another.
You mean the city of Castle Hills?
Mm-hmm, and the Crime Control Prevention District, they, they, I remember they offered something for an enormous price. They said it was just absolutely head to head, and they turned it down. Okay, I'm-
Well, you have, you have different funds. So the, you know, your crime control, uh, is on your, on a fund in, within your, um, financial statements. So it would be on INCODE as well as it currently is on Assist.
Thank you.
Debbie, I have a few questions for you here. Um, all major corporations, no matter what it is, small, large, anything, are, are moving to computer-based platforms, whether it be, um, Salesforce.com, whether it be whatever, whatever it might be. Is that a fact or not a fact?
There are, I mean, you still have cities that aren't on the comp, the platform and some that are.
But they're on something like Assist or, uh, even, even to a small degree, QuickBooks Plus or something. In other words, uh, what we were doing five years ago, who, who and what major entity over nine, 10 million, $9 million would continue to do the books they wa, the way they did five years ago?
Well, a lot of people would not invest in, um, accounting. I mean, we're not on the same system-
Okay.
-four or five years ago. But if that's the example you want to-
What?
But for instance, most of your cities around here are, were on INCODE, and they've gone to better versions of INCODE. So for instance, you know, you upgrade INCODE and they, they, uh, specialize in that governmental software. So, um, I, I guess I'm not sure what you're-
What I'm asking is, this is what I'm getting to. We have a broken system here.
You do.
We have a broken system. We have systems all over this, all over this city that don't integrate. Okay? And, and what ends up happening when you do that is you have two mistakes and to the tune of three months ago.
You had quite a few mistakes, yes.
And that went back several years, is that correct?
There were, there were some that were kind of immaterial. I wouldn't say, uh, there were a couple that went back several years, but they were immaterial to your financial statements.
So the question I have is, yes, this is a huge expense. There's, there's no doubt about it. But we have a broken system. We have a system that is acting like we did, uh, five, 10 years ago. And we, we have, uh, physical input or manual input that can, that can make things happen that don't mesh with the million-dollar tickets that we're, we're riding now. 900 and some odd thousand dollars. It's a separate system than the, than this particular system. And you're having to manually move things. Why would anybody want to stay that way? Hang on.
I, I, I can't answer that.
Is it because of cost?
Well, because, yes, you would, that, that's going to be your biggest, um, para, I mean, your biggest hindrance. I mean, it's expensive to move to INCODE.
Hang on, hang on. Okay.
Could you tell me, who are the competitors to INCODE?
Um, STW is an, in, is a, um, competitor. And STWSWT, did I say that? STW. They're, they're one of the compet, competitors. They're not used in South Texas very, very much. Um, uh, it's more of, I would say, a Midwestern, uh, north of Dallas type of system. New World is another system that's out there. Um, it's very robust. It's mainly used by a county, uh, counties. Um, MIP is really geared to non, MIP. It's really geared to nonprofits, but I do have a county and a city that, uh, have used it. It does not, um, integrate well with, um, well, the, the cities that have it use INCODE, um, for permits and, uh, different software for water. And I think they are going actually, or they're looking at going to INCODE right now also because, um, the way it's set up. Uh, MIP, and, and I love MIP. I worked for MIP for, um, several years, so, um, but I don't think it's best geared to a city or a county.
Do you think it's best for a city to be totally dependent upon one system?
Yes, I do.
You do?
Yes, I do.
Hang on, I'm not through. So who is the largest in the industry when it comes to this type of, of software? Largest in the industry across the board?
Well, it depends because you have different levels of cities. Um, you know, the city of San Antonio does not use INCODE.
Okay.
But cities your size, um, that we audit, I, you know, we're talking 28 cities and, except for, you know, cities like Santa Clara or, you know, very small cities.
And how many years have you been our auditor?
I've been your auditor, I believe, for 10, but I've been auditing governmental entities for 30.
30, and you're 10 with us. So what is your recommendation as far as the city of Castle Hills being a 10-year auditor?
I think you need to look at a more robust system. And I think INCODE is a very good system. And every city, almost every city around here uses INCODE. So it's, you, it's easy to pick up the phone and call another city and say, "I'm having this problem. Have you seen it before?" So, um, and for that reason, I really like that.
Okay, Ms. Scott?
Right, um, I have a question. Um, if we continue to use Assist, we go on as says quote, is it a true statement to say that there are multiple opportunities if we continue to use Assist for fraud to go undetected?
I don't, you know, I think if you have internal controls, good internal controls, bank recs are reconciled monthly. I think it's easier to, because of the type of system Assist is.
But I heard we weren't having them reconciled monthly, so-
Well, you, you were up until June of last year. But, um, you know, you, you didn't after that. Um, you did have to, you had a lady come in that I did recommend.
Right.
And she did about two months. Um, but she wasn't familiar with Assist. Again, Assist is not used very much in this area. Or, you know, I think there's maybe one other, um, user, so, um-
But it's giving multiple people access to our general ledger that probably don't need access to the general ledger.
That's true.
Which does leave us open to possible fraudulent things happening, undetected.
It's more of a QuickBooks of accounting so, of, um, city software is what I would, um, akin it to.
Okay. But it is leaving us open for issues.
You, you do have issues, yes.
By continuing under the same software that we have now.
Yes.
Okay.
And error. I, I don't want to say fraud, like, per se. I want to say errors.
Fraud per se, but error, unintentional error.
Unintentional error, yes.
And possibly other issues.
Ms. Debbie, I thank you for your prudence in, in talking about how far the books were off. Thank you. Mr. Trevino?
Yes, sir. Um, Mr. Gregory made a comment that kind of caught my attention. Where does the $100,000 investment come from?
The total cost over a five-year period, that includes the initial cost and the annual cost. That's close to $100,000.
Why five years?
Because that's what the contract costs for.
So it's $3,000 a month?
Uh, is some of that is probably maintenance, right?
The way it was, the way it was written, there's a one-time fee of thirty-one thousand, five hundred dollars, and then there's an annual fee for five years of thirteen thousand, six hundred and two. And when you add it up, it's ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and ten dollars spread out over a six-year period.
But that includes your maintenance, your upgrades, and everything else, so it's not a purchase price type of thing. It's really a service and a maintenance and an ongoing fee. And the other problem is, if you consider, how much are we losing in time? How many, how much inefficiency? It takes three times to do the same job that we could do on ENCODE, and it just, I don't know which, I don't know why we're questioning.
We, um.
Mr. Paul, I was just going to say, Laura can refer to that one as far as this, this five years locks us into that price, so it can't change over the next five years through ENCODE for anything related to maintenance or upgrades.
Mr., may I have more comments, but no more questions for Mrs. Frazier?
Ms. Frazier, have a safe trip.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gregory had asked about benefits earlier, and in my eyes, the biggest problem that I've seen and I've asked last year during the budget cycle if I could see the budget five years out, like forecast our budget five years out, so I can tell if the decisions I'm making on the budget we adopted for this year is a good idea. And was told, no, we can't do that. And what I understand is that in ASSIST, it is very, very difficult to use it in budgeting because you can't forecast out without doing it manually. So, what my question was, how many hours were spent by staff last year putting together a budget that could have been done by pushing a button with ENCODE? And we could have gone on to bigger and better and other business for the city instead of spending so many hours on the budget. So, I see having budget forecast out into the future as a benefit to members of council in adopting budgets. I see being able to drill down to revenue and expenses, so I can compare apples and apples and see what a particular expense is, or what is in an expense, or what is part of a revenue, and see what, you know, one, one thing that is a revenue on one side, but has an expense to it, you can actually see what, you know, whether something is, is worth keeping in the budget, whether something is making the city money. I see employee efficiencies as a benefit, both budgeting and monthly, and I see reducing the opportunities for mistake, just simple mistakes with transposing numbers and malfeasance. Those are the benefits to me, and I think that that is absolutely worth a hundred thousand dollars over a six-year period.
Thank you. Mr. Douglas, Mr. Gregory, do you have any response to that, please? Or anything regarding moving forward?
Well, I remember when I was in law school, they were introducing a new thing called jeopardization. There was a computer that would zap up all the legal books on a screen when you punch in one word and you'd get all the cases. It's quick. It's one punch of a button. But a lot of lawyers would say that what it does do is it eliminates the thought process of the person punching the button, and you're relying on technology instead of the best computer you have is your own mind. I'm not, I'm, I can see there are benefits to ENCODE. I'm not convinced, though, that ENCODE is the way to go at this time. I'm certainly not convinced about such an expenditure at this time. However, I am open for future information that might change my mind. I don't, we are not, I find it very intriguing that San Antonio doesn't use ENCODE. If it was such a great program, why in the heck doesn't San Antonio use it? But that's neither here nor there.
Let's answer that question. Why does San Antonio not use that?
I participate in the City of San Antonio.
You did what?
I participate in the City of San Antonio audit annually, subcontractor, and they have a system that was built specifically for them.
And how much was that system, Debbie?
I can get you that figure because we actually did the capital assets, but it's significant, like fifteen million dollars, so.
Kind of a good deal to me.
So, San Antonio built their own system?
They had it built by an outside firm, yes, a large, most large cities do, Dallas. Most, most cities, city of San Antonio's size don't use ENCODE. You know, ENCODE has their niche. Cities like Shertz use it, which, you know, have quite a bit more going on than you got, you currently do. All the way down to, you know, Halotas uses it, almost all the cities around here, Almost Park, Hollywood, Hollywood.
Does Alamo Heights use it? Does Alamo Heights use ENCODE?
Yes, they do. The lady that was helping here, that's what she used, Cynthia, she came from Alamo Heights. So, yes, they, they use it. I do not believe Terrell Hills is using it. I think they're looking at it. Converse, Silvo, trying to think of all the cities we audit, Chauvinville Park, Bernie, we don't audit them, but, Halotas, I said Halotas. Shertz, Universal City, Selma, almost every city that is in this area, Wimberly.
And the cost of this includes upgrades and maintenance? The cost that we're expected to pin includes maintenance and upgrades over this period of time?
Typically, it does. Contracts that I've seen, when cities have switched, Converse uses it, and they switched, and their system, that's the last contract I read, so that's the one I can think of. They switched, I think, four or five years ago.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so let's move on to the portion, thank you, Debbie. Let's move on to the portion of citizens to be heard on this agenda. Ms. Suzanne Riley. Thank you, Ms. Riley. Mr. Clyde McCormick.
Clyde McCormick, 207 Carrollwood, here in Castle Hills. I'd respectfully ask the council to defer decision on this project until the next council meeting for, for a couple of good reasons. First of all, the presentation was incomplete. The fact is that the contract calls for a five-year contract at thirteen, five, oh, two per year, plus thirty-one thousand dollars initial installation cost. That's true. But what isn't included in the contract and what isn't specified in the documents that we've received are two things that are very important. First of all, there's no timeline. We don't know how long it's going to take, and they won't determine that until the contract has been issued and they begin project development. So, we won't know how long it'll take until, until then. We won't know how many people will be coming in or how long they'll be with us. Second thing we don't know is what it's going to cost us for those people to travel and stay in San Antonio. If you look at section B1 of the, of the attachments to the contract, you'll see their travel policies. But there are no numbers there that'll be useful for you in determining what it would cost anybody to come and stay with us. So, we have a, a project that's going to be a fairly extensive project from looking at their contract. A lot of people will be coming in. There's half dozen project governors from the company, plus governors from the city that will be required to put together some kind of committee. So, we have an undetermined period of time and an undetermined number of people who'll be coming in to stay with us, and an undetermined cost for that project. It could easily be thousands of dollars in excess of the number that we've got in this contract. So, for that reason alone, it's worth deferring it to figure out what that is. We need some information from the company. We need some information from Mr. Rappley. We need some details on how long it will take them to do this and how many people will be here. There's no question of what we need, a really good finance system, no doubt about it. I don't know that this is the one, but whichever one we buy, we need to know what it's going to cost upfront. We don't know that right now. And so, for that reason, we need to take time and find out that, that particular piece of information, which is very important to us. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. George Booth?
Mr. Mayor, Council, George Booth, 124 Dogwood. I'm a little alarmed tonight. You know, the agenda said it's going to cost thirty-one thousand, five hundred dollars. Now I'm learning it's going to be upward of a hundred thousand dollars. I feel we're deceived by the agenda, what was written. I don't think you all have adequately researched this, and I'm curious if other modules that we currently have are going to be upgrading. Is that part of this hundred thousand dollar fee, or are we going to have to buy something else? And I just don't feel that you've adequately researched this.
Thank you, George. Mr., that's it. Okay. Did council have any questions about what the citizenry brought up? Excuse me? There's no public hearing. I have something. Okay, go ahead. Council is either approving or not approving to move ahead with ENCODE. We aren't approving the contract. We haven't seen the contract. You have these costs that was just brought up by any computer system when they come in the ci, excuse, when they come into the city to put in a new computer system. I've been through two of them, and it's not something, it, it's a negotiable item, and that's something that the city manager and the attorney would work on with the contract. If I'm not mistaken, Mr. Brennan, we're not approving the contract. We're just approving to go ahead, right? To, to proceed with the contract.
Yes, sir. You're authorizing the city manager to negotiate the contract.
Thank you.
Does that mean that the city manager will bring back to the council the contract for approval?
I don't think that's the intention. I think the motion would be to authorize the purchase of the system for the price stated and authorize the city manager to, to negotiate the contract. It doesn't necessarily have to come back.
Okay. Mr. Trevino, did you have any comments, please?
I trust that Mr. Rappley would proceed with his experience and with Castle Hill's best interests in mind. It's my understanding that much of these types of programs are fairly standard across the board, just given the fact that they're used everywhere, and I imagine the practices are standard across the board as such as well.
Ms. Scott, did you have any comments, please?
Well, we, we're agreeing to approve an amount, not to exceed thirty-one thousand, five hundred dollars in negotiation of this contract to purchase the ENCODE system. All the other departments are on ENCODE, am I correct in that?
With municipal court and permitting.
Municipal port, permitting, police department?
We are on other, other suites.
Other suites from the same company?
Interoperability does exist with ENCODE.
That interact, okay. So, and, and that thirty-one thousand, five hundred dollars, that would include bringing the people in to set it up, training, everything that I read in this extensive operation manual here. Could you clarify that, that this cost does include bringing it in, setting it up, setting up the ask you to files, to switch it over, and all of that sort of thing is included in this price?
Yeah, the one, the thirty-one thousand, five hundred is for the one time, for the implementation, for the purchase and implementation of the software.
That gets us up in running.
Now, they kind of gave us a timeframe that, that probably from an installment or implementation timeframe, it wouldn't happen until more than likely later this year from that standpoint, because they're about six months out working with other cities right now as far as schedules and timeframes for implementation. This year in the budget, we would have to pay the thirty-one thousand, five hundred. Next year's budget is where we would schedule the first annual maintenance fee as part of the first of the five years.
Okay, so all those costs are included in that thirty-one thousand?
And I, and as, as Councilman Trevino had mentioned, in, in my experience, yes, that my, my last two cities I worked for were all integrated with ENCODE from that standpoint. Thank you.
Debbie, I'm sorry, Ms. McLennan, did you have any comments for the, for the item, please?
I had noticed the provisions that Mr. McCormick brought up about the cost of travel on those exhibits, and so that was a little interesting to me, and so those would just be things that I would want to clarify, but it doesn't change the idea that, that we need to do something, and we are on so many ENCODE programs right now. This makes sense to have the integration across the board in the city. So, I would just, that was one thing that, that caught my eye, but I don't have any other comments.
Mr. Rappley?
Councilwoman, I think we can get that clarified, obviously, when we sit down and, and do the negotiation piece before signing the contract and working out those details as far as travel for implementation.
Mr. Rappley, in, in springboarding on her question, so, and this is probably one for you too, Debbie. This is, this is actually a turnkey operation, and what'll end up happening as far as outside expenses, let's talk about that for a minute. So, where are these people coming from that are going to be here? Is it Dallas, Houston, New York? Where do these, like the gentleman I talked to the other day when they were giving the presentation? Will they be, will he be part of this Tyler Technologies? Come on up.
Mayor, the gentleman you met, he's actually out of Lubbock, where they're based.
They're, I was going to say, they're based, but they do have people in different areas. I don't know who would be coming to train, train you, but they hire contractors a lot of times to come train. Also, there, there is a lot of experience in the room with Laura. She's been through to, several conversions to ENCODE, so I think you do have some experience there.
So, this figure of a hundred thousand dollars add-on for expenses?
I think you're probably going to look at maybe a conversion, somebody staying in a hotel, or maybe one or two people. You know, the last one that I saw happen, they weren't, the water, they had to convert water, police tickets, and all of their permitting, so that wasn't on there, and it took considerably longer. I would assume that this would be one or two weeks.
And most of this is, obviously, the first part of that is the data conversion, and then the implementation of the software.
Okay. I still, I still didn't hear it. What, so is this a three-week process, four-weeks process, ten-year process?
No, it's not.
Will I live to see it?
Once they convert the data, how old are you?
Sixty-four and fading fast.
Yeah, may, may or may not, I don't know. So, you know, the, they convert your data for you, and so when they convert the data, it depends on how much, you know, you, I've seen them where people don't know ENCODE, so they have to come in and train, depending on the staff you have, who knows ENCODE financially. I know both Ryan and Laura have worked with it, so you would need less, you know, less time for training. So, I think the, my understanding generally is, in the, the data conversion would be part of that thirty-one, five. I have not looked at your contract. I don't know what is in it, but I do suspect you would be paying travel from somewhere, and I would assume it would be in the state of Texas. It may be Dallas or Lubbock. But I don't think there's anybody here in San Antonio that they contract with. I'm not, I mean, I shouldn't say that because it's been four years since I've seen.
But you're relatively assured it's not going to cost a hundred thousand dollars for expenses for.
No, 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 no.
For somebody, I guess unless they're staying in the.
No, they're parameters, they're parameters. They have per diem.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right. Well, I don't know. Maybe they're going to stay at the Dominion Hotel and a thousand bucks a night. I don't know. Okay, good.
Mayor?
Yes.
Can I make a point, just off Councilman Trevino earlier, as far as clarification, that currently there is an annual maintenance with ASSIST right now, roughly three thousand, I believe, Laura, and so again, moving up to this annual maintenance is roughly about thirteen. So, it's about ten thousand a year difference from that standpoint over the five years, plus the one-time fee.
Okay, thank you. All right. Council, is there any other questions you have or comments? Looks like the audience has, and the people who signed up for this have spoke their minds. So, with that said, any other questions? Okay. With that said, let's go ahead, and we have a motion on the table, and we have a second. All in favor of moving forward with this and going ahead and authorize the city manager, raise your hands, please. Four. Douglas? One. Huh? He opposed. He opposed. So it's four to one, it passes. Miss Nora? Thank you. Will you notify them that we're gonna do that in the morning, please? Thank you. All right. Let's go on to the next item, which is considering, Debbie, have a safe trip, will you? Good, okay. Consider an act upon ordinance number... Excuse me, this is a resolution. One eight, one oh five, oh eight A, authorizing the city manager to transfer thirty-six thousand four hundred and twenty-six dollars to the supplemental street and drainage maintenance fund, also known as Fund Twenty-Two. Mister Rapley?
Yes, Mayor, as Miss Frazier had mentioned during the presentation, the surplus dollars that are put back in this year, obviously, that was thirty-six thousand four twenty-six, which makes up that total refund of about six thirty-five, uh, six, uh, oh-two. So what we wanted to be able to do, I understand it was mentioned each year in the audit, but as a part of signifying that transfer, we wanted to do it by resolution just to make sure it's clear and the process is transparent from that standpoint.
Thank you. Okay. So, um, this is a resolution authorizing the city manager. Do I have a motion, please? Do I have a second?
Second.
Mister Trevino, thank you for that second. There is no one signed up for this. So with that said, is there any comments? Mister Gregory, do you have any comments for the item, please?
No, sir.
Thank you. Mister Paul. Ms. McLean?
No.
Ms. Scott?
No.
Mister Trevino?
I appreciate the transparency.
Thank you. Okay, so let's take a vote, all in favor? It is unanimous, thank you, counsel. Okay, we've already considered three. All right. Let's move on to the granddaddy. Consider an act upon resolution number R eighteen oh five oh five B, declaring support for the redevelopment of the Wedgewood Building located at sixty-seven oh one Blanco Road, Castle Hills, Texas. Mister Rapley?
Sorry, Mayor. I was speaking to Mister Brennan.
That's all right.
Yes, the Wedgewood development, the Wedgewood Building has a new potential investor and developer. They're actually working towards getting financial support. In the packet there, there's a letter that was signed by you in regards to supporting this proposed development. The, I guess, the financial, or the banking group asked for them to have a collective body or a resolution from the community, and so this was the resolution that was proposed from that standpoint. I understand there might be someone here for that particular development to speak on behalf of it, if necessary.
Yes. It's the last item on the agenda, right? I'd like to hear that. Sir?
Good evening, counsel. Patrick Christensen here on behalf of the potential buyers. It's actually Pat Bernacki with six-seven zero one Blanco Road LP. That's an entity that's purchasing the Wedgewood Towers, if you will. Basically, what they're doing is they're applying for historic tax credits. These aren't to be confused with any kind of low-income tax credits. These are tax credits the government has basically to support the rehabilitation of historic buildings. The Wedgewood Tower was designed by a famous architect whose name is escaping me at the moment, but as a building within the National Register of Historic Places, they can apply for these tax credits, and that helps them, will help them remodel the building and get it functioning again.
Thank you.
And that's why we're here. Thank you.
Is it, let's get a motion, and let's get a second, then I'll... I have a few questions, and I'm sure counsel does, too.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, Ms. Scott, Mister Trevino was the motion. Mister Brennan, is it proper now to ask the gentleman, counsel asks the gentleman? Let's see, this is five, so we have one... What are they doing in here? We have two people signed up, okay, to speak on this. Okay. Is it proper to ask them the nature of this, whether there's going to be, uh, proposed economic development in there as far as shops or anything? Or is this just a general resolution to say, you know what, the city sort of welcomes you with open arms?
Well, if I were you, I didn't, and he's standing there, I'd ask him any question you can think of. He doesn't have to answer it, so I'd have at it.
Well, you know, he's closest to the person who's building it, so I guess it'd be better than some other type of rumors that might start out there. So with that said, Mister Trevino, do you want to ask the gentleman any questions?
Can you give us any kind of idea of what the proposed development might be?
Okay, so just to quickly mention what you said about economic development. Interestingly enough, the previous owners plotted out some of the frontage there along Blanco Road, so the intention is after we get Wedgewood up and running is to basically build a small shopping center right there, maybe something like Starbucks, things like that, there on Blanco. As far as, and again, your question, please, I'm sorry, I kinda went off on.
Just to kind of what y'all's vision is for the property.
Basically, the restorative is senior housing. That's the goal. The building needs extensive renovations, it needs updating with fire alarms, fire sprinkler system, things like that, so it can be a safe development. As part of that process, we're pursuing these tax credits, plus also bank financing to finance that remodeling and rehabilitation. It's been vacant for four years now. It needs significant work, significant upgrades.
Sure. I noticed there was a little bit of a difference between the resolution posted and the, I guess, an amendment, and I was just checking to see if you could speak to that, please.
Sure, I think there was some concern with the mention of affordable housing meant some sort of low-income housing. That was not the case. By affordable, they simply meant market rate, not necessarily luxury housing, but market rate housing. And I believe our current model has the monthly rents of being one thousand three hundred and fifty-one dollars for a one-bedroom apartment.
Oh.
Well, it includes amenities, includes continental breakfast every morning, all utilities, cable, internet, and some various services, including, you know, checking up on the residents.
So there's gonna be extensive renovation in there?
Absolutely. It needs complete renovation. I mean, not only to the fire damage, but new furniture, new everything.
Wow.
Especially fire alarm and fire sprinkler.
Wow. Ms...
Sorry, sir, may I proceed? Do you have a projected value after renovation?
I believe I do. Let me see. I wanna say, it's, and I'm not the developer on that.
And not gonna hold you to ballparking.
I know it's more than twenty million dollars. At least that's what the add-on tax value will be.
I think that's it for now, Mayor.
Thank you, Mister Trevino. Ms. Scott, did you have any questions for the gentleman? And I'm sorry, your name again?
Patrick Christensen, I'm sorry.
Patrick, yes, sir, thank you.
I think Mister Trevino covered most of them specifically, like I said, with the new resolution. I did have questions in the wording, and I was very, very relieved to find that it's sustainable to the current market values of what apartments are going for for senior living in our community, and I wanna thank you for bringing this forward.
Sure, we apologize for that miscommunication.
Ms. McLean?
I'll be happy to see some action in life over there again, because we live just behind there. So I pass it a lot, and I'm sad every time I see it. So I'm happy to, happy that you brought this forward. I'm happy with the revised resolution that we have, and I'm really excited to see how this building turns into a shining star again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McLean. Mister Paul? Just one for Mister Brennan. The last whereas, where the phrase with a sustainable market value, and then below it, be it resolved. Do we need to bring that down into that paragraph also, or is the way the paragraph written okay?
You know, the whereas is all the predicates for the final resolution, so I think it's fine the way it is. I mean, anybody that reads this has to incorporate all the stuff above into what their interpretation is.
Thank you. Thank you, Mister Gregory.
Are you familiar with senior living housing projects here in San Antonio of comparable cost?
I'm not aware of any rehabilitations like this of a large senior housing tower. I know that the, for example, just using what limited examples there are of older housing stock like this, the San Antonio Housing Authority has gone through and done some rehabilitations, but nothing to this extent that I'm aware of. Most everything is, right, but that was, that was, you know, constructed from scratch, it was new. I don't, it hasn't been shut down for four years. This is kind of a unique project.
What about Army Residence?
Again, that is another senior tower. There's also Air Force Village, there's a lot of different communities like this. But none of these that I'm aware of have been vacant for four years and need to be significantly rehabilitated.
So is this community similar to the forum in that it, an aspect of the forum where people buy or rent their apartments, and it gives them meals and this, that, and the other? Does there, is there any other amenity that is planned by the developer other than meals? I guess they're planning meals?
Well, breakfast meals. There'll be a continental breakfast as a part of it, but they will have their own kitchens for lunch and dinner, and they don't have to participate in breakfast if they want to, and they'll be... It's not a nursing home where there's nurses checking on people like on an hourly basis, but certainly there will be people that are checking on them on a daily basis to make sure they're okay. So it's kind of independent living, if you will, versus a nursing home?
So if you're going to have additional stores and restaurants, you expect to possibly expand, correct?
In the front, correct.
Where do you get the parking for that?
Well, we've talked, explored ideas of putting the parking below. I mean, using some of the parking for the residents below the commercial structures. I mean, like, we don't have a final design plan. I was just stating that it was plotted for that intent in the future. Seniors don't necessarily always have their own cars. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't.
So it was originally planted for underground parking?
For the commercial, on the front. Well, so, again, the underground parking would be used by the residents, and some kind of parking on the surface would be used for visitors to the commercial. We haven't worked that out yet. We don't have the building design plans yet. It's just, it's been plotted that way, so we're exploring that possibility.
When is the earliest you think this could be completed?
The residential tower? We wanna work on it within phases, so we're hoping within two to three years it'll be fully functional and up and running.
I appreciate the change in verbiage, because the original thing did sort of send chills up my spine, and I appreciate the clarification.
We apologize for that.
Thank you.
Just two more quick things. Number one, last, I think it was last year, we approved the parking to be reduced from two to one and a half per apartment, and I think this is probably what the people had thinking about the potential. The second thing is that this is just a resolution saying, we want you guys here, and it has nothing to do with zonings or SUPs or architect or anything. We want you guys here, and this is an affirmation of that. Is this not correct, Mister Brennan? Thank you.
Yes, and just emphasize the point, Mister Paul, that there's no financial incentives tied to this.
Pat, you don't know me, but I guess everybody in the building who's here now does. I was one of the ones that saw the first brick go into the Wedgewood, standing on the four-way stop at Loop Thirteen and Blanco Road. My father told me there was gonna be a big building there someday. Fifty-nine years later, my mother died in that building on the fifth floor, and my dad played as a jazz musician in the club up at the top when she would let him out from time to time from our house. So I wanna congratulate you and tell you that as far as I'm concerned, which I'll be up here another year, we welcome you, and we welcome what you're planning to do there, and I hope that you will, you know, you will see the city as, so I suspect there's gonna be a lot of people who, uh, live in the city, possibly move there someday. One question I did have, is there rules as far as people being able to walk in and walk? I mean, I realize wheelchairs and scooters these days, but is there rules as far as when a person becomes incapacitated? Set up at this point?
Well, if they're incapacitated in some way, and they're no longer independent living, they will probably have to transition into a different.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because some people have a lot of money, and you could set up Metis Hospital in one of those rooms. And, you know, IVs, whatever it might be. And I just wanna make sure that this was, the intention was that we make sure that there's some kind of rules that people walk in and walk out, or they are able to get in and get out by their wheelchair, scooter, whatever it is.
It's intended to be independent living with some amenities and checking up on.
Gotcha.
Make sure they're okay.
We do have a couple of people signed up for this, and, let's see, this is, I didn't... Ah, here we go. John Kenny?
Excuse me. Good evening, John Kenny, one oh three Briar Cliff. I'm amazed that we would even consider turning the Wedgewood back into a senior living, independent living facility to set us up for the same possible terrible action that happened a few years back. Mister Gregory, to answer your question, there's three thousand two hundred and forty-nine project-based subsidized apartments in San Antonio. I cannot believe that I have been misled on this topic. Several times over the years, I have been told that the redevelopment of the Wedgewood would not be Section Eight housing. How silly of me to not know better than the games of semantics we have been playing. Mister Mayor, in your letter to Mister Bernacki, you mentioned a vital senior living option, which is available and affordable. What is your definition of affordable? You speak of revitalization. How do you define revitalization? I don't believe those words work together in this situation. Affordable senior living is something that we as a society must consider. However, if we want to see Castle Hills as a city progress into the future and to truly revitalize the Blanco Road commercial corridor, there then redeveloping the Wedgewood back into a senior living facility and rebranding with a new name is not the way to go. Putting lipstick on a pig doesn't change the pig. It just makes how we look at the pig. It changes how we look at the pig, and we know how it makes the pig feel. Let me remind you of a story on Ken's Five dated December twenty-eighth, twenty sixteen. Amid the chaos, five people were killed, eighteen sent to the hospital, and more than a hundred others experienced long-term effects of smoke and chemical inhalation. That's because these independent seniors were stuck on the eleventh floor. And if you don't think that that would happen again by doing another senior living facility, you're sadly mistaken. For the past months, again, from the article, for the past few months, city leaders have been in talks with the owners of the original Wedgewood Apartments, discussing conceptual plans to build a new residential and retail facility. Maybe something like a mini, mini Pearl, Howell said. Sorry, Tim, just reading the article. The effort may get a boost from an ongoing effort to get the building listed on the National Register of Historic Places, which would allocate state and federal dollars for renovation. I also wonder how this revitalization plays into the city's master plan. Do we have a strategic plan for Castle Hills? How can you plan for the future when you do things like this that'll put us back to where we were in two thousand fourteen? When will our council see that other small municipalities are doing planning to take them forward? Look at Alamo Heights. Why is Alamo Heights favored over Castle Hills? Our lots are bigger, our homes are nicer. People choose Alamo Heights over Castle Hills because you, our council, and councils in the past have not planned for our future. Shame on all of you. By the way, what is the status of the Economic Development Committee? What are the tax benefits to the Wedgewood, and more importantly, what is the tax burden to Castle Hills? Have we sat down with other developers to discuss opportunities? Have you, the council, sat down and brainstormed what could be? John F. Kennedy once said, "The problems of the world cannot possibly be solved by skeptics or cynics whose horizons are limited by the obvious realities." We need people who can dream of things that never were and ask why not. There are too many questions left unanswered. I personally don't believe this whole redevelopment has been transparent, whether it's gonna be Section Eight, senior living independent. You know, if you remember the people who spoke on the news, they were saying things like, "The bathrooms didn't even have the call button, they didn't have the pole cord." In an independent living facility, that's not required. The people who lived there felt they were in a nursing home. I personally don't believe the whole redevelopment has been transparent. I urge you not to pass this resolution until all citizens' questions have been sufficiently answered. Change is the law of life, and those who look only to be to the past or present are certain to miss the future. Change will happen in Castle Hills whether you, or I, or anyone sitting here or listening tonight likes it. Lead change into the future. Be leaders. Show all of us what you're made of. Create a plan for a better tomorrow. Don't destine us to the past. Don't pass this resolution. Thank you.
Next on the list is Brother Dooling. He's gone home. Al, did you want to take his place? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. John Kenny, and I have not spoken about this before, we are close friends. What John Kenny had to say reflects almost a hundred percent of what I had to say. I do have concerns. I'm a proud resident of Castle Hills. I pay my taxes, high taxes. I want to live here. My thought after the travesty that happened at the Wedgewood was that when it would, when it's renovated into a nice semi-luxury apartment complex, I could live there. But if it's going to be a, a senior home, as a senior, I think I would know when to leave the place. But if I get into a four-hundred-square-foot apartment in there, and my rent is twelve-hundred dollars a month, and I have the illusion that it's a nursing home or a senior citizen home, I'm not going anywhere. And I'm afraid that that's what's gonna happen. We're gonna get in there thinking that it's gonna progress, thinking that it's gonna be a positive place to live, and we're gonna stay there, we're gonna need, we're gonna need services to come help us, and that place will not have the facility. I certainly would hate to be on the eighth floor and not be able to be taken down by ambulance if a travesty was to happen again. A, a question that I have is, our revenues are set, our taxes used, our, our revenue was seventy-five, seventy-five percent down since the fire. Obviously, there's no residents living there. What is gonna be the cost of our fire department, of our police department, having to respond once again to every phone call, every nine-one-one call that will come in, and they'll have to respond? Is that gonna take away from the citizens of Castle Hills, or is that just gonna raise our taxes so we can continue to get those services? There's a lot of questions to be asked. John mentioned a lot of them, John Kenny did. My basic question is, when you say Starbucks and things like that, are we talking about a thing like a Seven-Eleven, a Landromat? Those are really basic questions, but I, too, am opposed to senior living. If we're gonna do something with it, get a company, get a bank that's gonna come, invest a little bit more, make it an attractive place for younger people to move into, maybe not families, or maybe families, but make it somewhere that's gonna be attractive for the general community, i.e. the Pearl, i.e. South Town, places that are being renovated that do bring in income to our community.
Thank you, Mr. Mueller.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate you. Robbie, you're not signed up, and did you wanna, did you want to speak?
I will.
Thank you.
I'm delighted to have you all here, but I would prefer that you have this, like, an, maybe an executive apartment, or a millennial apartment, or something that's gonna bring the young people in, and not another senior living. I know that seniors need a place to live, but, uh, you know, not there. I mean, this, this building has such an opportunity to become a very first-class executive apartment, where people just fly in and come in for a week, you know, they, companies that have apartments here, that they send people in and out, or, or young people that can go directly downtown to work, or out to Stone Oak, or wherever. But I would love to see it be a younger, lively apartment.
Thank you, Robbie.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Careful, though, the last time I said something about young people, I was chastised greatly in a letter that a resident sent out. But anyway, Ms. Winger, you wanted to speak? Speaking of that? Thank you, Robbie.
Thank you. Yes, Leslie Winger, one thirty-seven Lujan, and of course, the neighborhood I live in abuts the Wedgewood. My concern is the same concern that I expressed during the zoning commission. There is nothing definite here. We do not know, this is a potential developer, as the gentleman just said, so that's what we had before. We do not know who the developer is. You're saying welcome to somebody who doesn't actually exist yet. Maybe they're gonna do it, maybe they're not. He did mention low-income tax credits, so whether we're talking about affordable or low-income, and there's some difference there, why are we talking about low-income tax credits? Because John Kenny is correct, low-income tax credits are for Section Eight. I think you need to be very careful about saying welcome to that, because that is not going to be anything that the city wants. As far as whether it's a senior, you know, living or not, that matters very much, what type of senior living it is. Previously, when, when the Wedgewood was established, they did not allow people who were not mobile on their own. That changed over a period of time. Well, thank you, Johnny.
You're very welcome.
Thanks. So I would hope that that wouldn't happen, but I don't know what you've changed in the resolution. Of course, all the rest of us have, is what was in the packet, and you, you say over and over again, now, historic tax credits, that's different from low-income tax credits. But nothing has been put in paper. You have before you somebody who may or may not be developing the building. There is nothing definite put on paper that says, this is a contract. I would like to see that presented to council first before we welcome anybody here, because we don't know what's going to happen. It's all just talk. Thank you.
Yeah.
So did you come for low-income tax credit? Where did that come from?
Well, we do have...
You applied for historic tax credit, and that is it? Is that the rest? So you have no intention of low income?
Patrick, welcome to Castle Hills, sir. It's amazing how news gets started around here. No, he didn't. He said he did not, Leslie. Mr., Patrick, would you like to come up here again and explain about, uh, your intentions on low-income people? I think there was a problem.
Yes. What I said was, this is not for low-income tax credits, this is for historic tax credits. For his, I don't know if this is on or not, historic tax credits that allow developers to apply for tax credits for historic buildings. This is a historic building, this is another mechanism where we can have some funds to rehabilitate the buildings. It's gonna be a very expensive rehabilitation. So anything we can do to try to help that, like historic tax credits, we want to apply for.
Okay.
Mayor, may I ask a quick question?
Sure.
I hear you, I understand that it is not low-income tax credits. What assurance do we have that the developer decides to go to low-income tax credits? Because that's obviously a point of contention here.
Well, I believe the resolution, I'll have to read through it again, but I believe it mentions historic tax credits, does it not?
It doesn't say, it doesn't exclude them, I just don't...